Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
Thank you.
And now I will be reading the community pledge. The BHUSD community acknowledges that in order to achieve educational excellence, we must act with integrity and respect for each other and our learning environment. Therefore, I pledge to models civil behavior and respect in all communications and in public while maintaining a culture of honesty. Listen and acknowledge difference of opinion. Do my part to protect the inclusive culture in which we honor the relationship between all school community members and honor our learning environment, including how we take care of our schools and personal property. By holding ourselves and each other accountable to this pledge at all times, we will promote an environment of educational excellence that will allow our entire BHUSD community to thrive.
All right, thank you. Wonderful job. Before we get started with things, I do want to have a moment of silence as we continue to think about those affected by the Middle East conflict, also those who are affected by the aftermath of Hurricane Helene. There's those in Sudan who are suffering greatly. If we could have a moment of silence, please, for these folks. Thank you. Can I get an approval for the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Was there a report of closed session?
Thank you, Dr. Stern. There was no action taken today in closed session.
Okay. Thank you. That brings us to teacher-student spotlight. We have Ms. Kaber who will get us started.
I have a full team tonight. I don't need this. I have a full team tonight. Thank you, Board of Education, and everyone who came to talk about this incredible human being. When we start, I'm sorry, I'm Sarah Kaber. I'm the principal at Elrodeao Elementary School. When we created schools and elementary schools, I had the honor of starting to work with Mr. Weddle. When you run a school, there are so many different people that it takes to make things run efficiently and run well and create a school community. So over and above all of the academics that happen, all of the soft skills, all of that social-emotional learning, all of the taking care of the whole child comes through Mr. Weddle's office. He leads an entire team of, we call him a collaborative team, all of our PLCs around social-emotional learning. And he's done an incredible job of making both Hawthorne and Elrodeao really feel like a home and a community. And he even has some students that came with him that feel like that. This is his 11th year in BHUSD. He's worked at BV and Elrodeao when they were part of the middle school. He spent some time back and forth and back and forth. We're so happy to have him full-time at Elrodeao and part of our, like, really daily team of getting things working and done and making sure kids are getting what they need on a daily basis. So, Mr. Weddle, I want to give you the floor.
Hello, everyone. Board members, I'd like to thank you for having me here tonight. I want to thank the two students, Presley, an amazing, exceptional fifth-grade student who really leads by example, being president of Student Council, my buddy over here, Ethan. I got to share a quick story about my friend Ethan right here. So last year, I was presenting for the CASC conference, the California Association of School Counselors. I was very nervous for it. And Ethan was a kid I'd been working with for quite a while to help him because being at school, he was very nervous. And I'm sitting there, working on my presentation, I'm all fretting and I'm nervous about everything. And he comes to my office and he has a present for me. And here, I see this kid. He's emotional. I see this kid who is working so hard to be confident in himself. And he gives me this present, and I think, well, why am I nervous? When I see that this kid has worked so hard on a daily basis to take what I'm saying and believe what I'm saying, to believe in himself, to try to be more of a confident kid every single day. So I want to...
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
Thank you.
And now I will be reading the community pledge. The BHUSD community acknowledges that in order to achieve educational excellence, we must act with integrity and respect for each other and our learning environment. Therefore, I pledge to models civil behavior and respect in all communications and in public while maintaining a culture of honesty. Listen and acknowledge difference of opinion. Do my part to protect the inclusive culture in which we honor the relationship between all school community members and honor our learning environment, including how we take care of our schools and personal property. By holding ourselves and each other accountable to this pledge at all times, we will promote an environment of educational excellence that will allow our entire BHUSD community to thrive.
All right, thank you. All right, wonderful job. Before we get started with things, I do want to have a moment of silence as we continue to think about those affected by the Middle East conflict, also those who are affected by the aftermath of Hurricane Helene. There's those in Sudan who are suffering greatly. If we could have a moment of silence, please, for these folks. Thank you. Can I get an approval for the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Was there a report of closed session?
Thank you, Dr. Stern. There was no action taken today in closed session.
Okay. Thank you. That brings us to teacher-student spotlight. We have Ms. Kaber who will get us started.
I have a full team tonight. Thank you, Board of Education, and everyone who came to talk about this incredible human being. When we start, I'm sorry, I'm Sarah Kaber. I'm the principal at El Rodeo Elementary School. When we created schools and elementary schools, I had the honor of starting to work with Mr. Weddle. When you run a school, there are so many different people that it takes to make things run efficiently and run well and create a school community. So over and above all of the academics that happen, all of the soft skills, all of that social-emotional learning, all of the taking care of the whole child comes through Mr. Weddle's office. He leads an entire team of, we call him a collaborative team, all of our PLCs are on social-emotional learning. And he's done an incredible job of making both Hawthorne and El Rodeo really feel like a home and a community. And he even has some students that came with him that feel like that. This is his 11th year in BHUSD. He's worked at BV and El Rodeo when they were part of the middle school. He spent some time back and forth and back and forth. We're so happy to have him full-time at El Rodeo and part of our, like, really daily team of getting things working and done and making sure kids are getting what they need on a daily basis. So, Mr. Weddle, I want to give you the floor.
Board members, I'd like to thank you for having me here tonight. I want to thank the two students, Presley, an amazing, exceptional fifth-grade student who really leads by example, being president of Student Council, my buddy over here, Ethan. I got to share a quick story about my friend Ethan right here. So last year, I was presenting for the CASC conference, the California Association of School Counselors. I was very nervous for it. And Ethan was a kid I'd been working with for quite a while to help him because, being at school, he was very nervous. And I'm sitting there, working on my presentation, I'm all fretting and I'm nervous about everything, and he comes to my office and he has a present for me. And here, I see this kid. He's emotional. I see this kid who is working so hard to be confident in himself, and he gives me this present, and I think, well, why am I nervous? When I see that this kid has worked so hard on a daily basis to take what I'm saying and believe what I'm saying, to believe in himself, to try to be more of a confident kid every single day. So I want to thank the two students who have come here today. Thank you guys so much. Thank you. So this year, I'm presenting again at the CASC conference. I presented last year, like I said, and I find that when you go to a conference, it's actually better to present rather than to attend. There's a great challenge when it comes to that. So this year, I decided to select something that means something to me, and my topic this year is helping students embrace mistakes and reject perfection. Now, when it comes to this type of idea, it has to start from a very personal place for me. Because if I can really buy into it personally, then I know what to do with it. I know how to work with it. So as a kid, growing up, struggling in a classroom, not feeling that I was smart enough, not feeling that I was capable enough, knowing that I'm sitting in a classroom and everyone's raising their hands and I do not understand what's going on. So as a young kid, struggling throughout elementary, middle school, high school, I was a kid that did not like to make any mistakes because a part of my identity was on the line. Because if I raised my hand to say I don't know what's going on, I was worried, I was terrified that others would find out that I did not know what was going on. So instead, I became the kid that would misbehave. I'd rather make a mistake by getting kicked out of a class than actually trying to say I need help. And the idea of me ever going to a college, because in my mind, it was only the kids who were perfect, who had perfect lives who can go to college. That level of deep rejection that I felt from so many elements in my life really put itself into this idea of why I wanted to do this. So from a personal standpoint, I know what to do with that. But then I thought, well, what's it like to be a kid today facing those same emotional challenges? But I didn't grow up in an era with 24/7 technology. So that piqued my curiosity. What's it like to be a kid today? And how, having those same feelings of not wanting to make mistakes, feeling you need to be perfect, what is that like in a 24/7 internet era? How does that affect someone's mental health, self-esteem? How does that affect their social skills? How does that affect their sense of identity? So in my research, as I started looking into this, I stumbled upon this book. A lot of us might know it. It's called The Anxious Generation by Jonathan Haidt. And in this book, it answered a lot of my questions. Seeing as we now live with a generation that are growing up in a phone-based childhood, most of us that were alive before the year of 1995, hundreds and thousands of years, we all grew up with a play-based childhood. But then, starting in the 2000s, we have the internet that comes into effect. 2007, we have the iPhone, that now, all of a sudden, we have access to internet at our disposal. 2010, we have the first front-facing camera. And then we see around 2013 to 2015, the majority of kids are now given phones. And at that same time, research is now showing that we also see a tremendous increase in depression, self-harm, suicide. So there's a strong correlation between how children that are spending so much time on their phone, they're not socializing nearly as much as they used to. They're heavily influenced by a level of life that they're not really sure what is real and what is not. And in this book, you also come to learn that there's a big shift in the early 2010s where parents start thinking that the world is less safe. We have to make all the playgrounds completely safe. We have to bubble wrap everything. I was just having a conversation with a parent today about how the middle school used to have a woodshop class. We probably wouldn't have that now because it's too dangerous. So in the 2010s, we're seeing, we've got to keep the kids home, we've got to keep everything safe because it's too scary out there. But yet, we give them a phone that has no guardrails, and they are allowed just to be on the internet. So over the past 10 years, we now see that one in three teenage students have a persistent feeling of hopelessness and sadness. That is a 40% increase since 2009. 65% of socialization is down since 2010. When we're looking at what our kids are facing in this world, when you look at just 65% of socialization being down, how we become who we are is by having to interact in the real world. It's like emotional bumper cars. Now, we can't quite exactly put the toothpaste back in the tube, you know? And in this book, really what it suggests is that parents have to be more proactive within the phones and schools have to make a no-phone policy. That's not my place. So for what I want to convey at this conference to all counselors is, well, there's still the human element involved. So how is it we, as counselors, can make better connections with kids? How is it that if a kid is struggling and they're not able to see anything better because their reality is slightly skewed by what they're seeing on the internet, what they're seeing through social media? We have to understand that if a child is losing hope, how can they actually take a risk in life? Because every one of us that's here in life, in this room, we're here because we had a chance, we took a risk. I tell kids all the time about having a growth mindset, and it feels quite contradictory to me because I'm sitting there saying, it's okay, make mistakes, got to crack a few X to make an omelet, but those kids are looking at me going, no, I have to get all fours. I have to get all As. I have to do this to get into college. So it's a very confusing message that kids have. And I truly believe that it's important for kids to have high expectations, to have really big goals for themselves. But if you're living in a world where you're seeing an increase, like depression for young boys has increased by 161% since 2010, depression for girls has increased 145%. So how can we encourage our kids to go ahead and think big and make bold decisions in life when that level of anxiety and depression is so weighing them down? So for me, as a school counselor, it's really simple. It's about how do you build connections? And how do you understand that if a child has a belief system in their identity? Keep in mind that a belief system is not a fact. A belief system comes from a set of experiences that create memories. So if a child is telling us, I don't have any friends, it's a belief system. If a kid says, I'm not smart, it's a belief system. So I think as counselors, we can work towards understanding what that identity is and how we can understand about how to help them reframe things. I really believe in the idea that perspective matters tremendously. So we, as counselors, can guide them to understand, well, where does this belief come from? And we can give them the tools on how to reframe things and give them the daily practice. So if I'm working with a kid and he doesn't say he's smart, it's a part of my job to go, you don't know how smart you really are. You haven't discovered it yet. It's a part of my job to understand, well, where is their success? When I used to work with kids in middle school, if a kid's failing a class, that is evidence that they are failing. But to that kid, there's no hope. But to me, if reframing, I could look at the class and look at that student and go, well, if you have a 48%, you could have a 0%, so you're not actually completely failing. And how many percentage points do we have to go just to get that thing to a D? We don't celebrate a D, but a D is better than F, so we're moving in the right direction. Failing, it's relative. Success is relative. And I think it's hard for a lot of kids today to understand really what that means. They see success as being, it's the end result, but it's not the end result, it's the process. And it's so hard for our kids in this generation with this increasing level of anxiety, this increasing level of depression and self-harm, to be okay that they're not perfect, to be okay that if they don't get into that dream college, that it's okay. I mean, how many of us here have a bachelor's degree that's different than our master's degree? Quite a few of us. How many of us at age eight knew we were going to be teachers or educators? Not many of us, because we're constantly changing. But for young kids that are seeing change happen in such a rapid rate because of the internet, I mean, if I'm talking about hundreds and thousands of years where we naturally socialized by human interactions, and in just 24 years, we've seen that completely turn upside down, I don't mean that to sound very dark, but that's why I come back to the idea that the human element. And it's just beyond counselors, like all of us as educators, as adults, as parents, it's about understanding that there is something that our kids are struggling with. So it's a matter of, how can we connect with them? How can we understand that if their belief system is, I'm not good enough? How can we help them see the evidence that is not completely 100% true? When a kid says, I don't know how to learn, I had a kid the other day tell me that, that they struggle to learn. But then I come to find out that she rides horses, and she started telling me all these things that she knows about horses. I'm like, you just taught me about riding horses. So clearly, you learned something, and you just taught me something, so now you're a teacher. When you can have that impact on kids to share it that way, it's a very important thing. So with this conference, it really means a lot to me. I really enjoy doing this. I really enjoy working with kids. I know the state of things, and just the way that I said, it sounds kind of grim, but I really have a lot of hope in the human experience that it's about all of us, sitting with kids and giving them the space and time to feel connected, to feel trusted, and to feel supported. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. I know we have a lot of comments about such a wonderful explanation to us, so I'd like to go around and start with Mr. Margot.
Thank you, Mr. Weddle. I fortunately have been witness your work firsthand over the years, and I really super appreciate the attention that you pay to every single child, to make them feel like they might be the only children you're talking to at that moment. And it's a wonderful skill that very few people have. So just on behalf of myself and my colleagues, I appreciate all of this, and also representing the district the way you do.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Mr. Weddle, going back to the Carline days.
Yes.
I always would look for you because I knew that from you, I was getting the real, true, and full answer about whatever was on your mind and what you're seeing about my student and all the students. And so I just really appreciate and thank you for your integrity and your honesty. You may not be telling me or us what we want to hear, but you're telling us what we have to hear, and thank you for that.
Appreciate that.
Well, I really enjoyed your opening. I was ready to take a little bit of a thing about it because it's opposite of what I believe. I mean, you have to have failure to learn and then how to handle success.
Absolutely.
Which you said to approve of failure, and I thought, oh, this is going to be interesting.
Yeah.
But it was interesting. I have to tell you, what you had to say just rang so many bells, and it was just unbelievable. And I have to tell you, I want to thank you for making that presentation tonight. It was really stellar, and I know that you are a stellar counselor because I've heard many fine things. I think we are very, very lucky to have you here in our school district, especially at El Rodeo, and I hope we get to hear from you again. And I want to congratulate you on going to the CASC to make your presentation. They're the lucky ones that get to hear this also. I'm sure it'll be outstanding.
That's true. Yes, ma'am.
Are you nervous?
I'm a duck. You know, I'm calm on the surface, but legs are kicking underneath the surface.
Can I tell you a little story? I hope everybody will bear with me. When I was a little girl and I was going through school, I wish I'd had you as a counselor. We didn't have counselors in those days in the elementary school. That's a long time ago. If I had encountered you, I wouldn't be sitting here today, to be very honest. I would be practicing medicine in a doctor, in a building, in a hospital or something because I always wanted to be a doctor. But you know why I never pursued it?
What's that?
I didn't have the confidence that I would be able to get through it. I needed you. But luckily, I did fairly well as a teacher, so I won't take exception to that. But I want to, I wish there had been a you when I was going to elementary school.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
So thank you again for your presentation.
You're very welcome.
Rochelle, you said you wouldn't be here if you had had him, so for that reason, I'm glad you didn't because we really like you here on the board. But Dr. Marcus, that has a nice ring to it, definitely. Mr. Weddle, wow, thank you. I loved what you had to say. It was so heartfelt. I could tell you were speaking like you really understand and believe in it. And I know of John Haidt quite well, and it is true that there is a strong, you know, negative relationship between like the early 2000s and 2010 when the cellphones came on, you know, came into our lives, and how solitary time among young people has skyrocketed. And as you know, I went into counseling and school psychology, and I definitely feel a lot of the same things that you feel. And I think that one thing that a lot of people aren't aware of is why it is we have so many counselors now. And I know you can relate to this, but, you know, the world obviously has changed since COVID. I know that they say that parental stress is higher than it's ever been, okay? And there's more single families. There's families that are newly blended. There's a bunch of stressors that we didn't have like as much of in like the 1950s and 1960s when you knew your neighbors, and there was a whole network of support for our kids. So now that a lot of those things have dissolved, I feel like, you know, support within the schools is more important than ever. And it's not just for like the outliers or the extreme cases of depression and anxiety, and that's definitely there, but for the things that you're talking about, like you take a student who doesn't believe in themselves, and there's no one at home who's, you know, who has the, you know, they're stressed about other things, and they're not there to necessarily remind them of just how smart they really are. And so I guess what I'm trying to say is, your role is a very valuable one. And I have no doubt that you have not only comforted students, but you have also made them succeed more, you and your colleagues. And that's why I went into this profession, and I'm very impressed with what you had to say. I could have listened to you for another 40 minutes easily.
I appreciate that.
Forty-five, I don't know, but another 40 easily.
Yeah, 40, we're good.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, and Mr. Weddle, thank you so much. And Dr. Stern touched upon this, and I think that it's one thing that we don't talk about a lot, but it's, you know, people sometimes will question the resources that we have in our schools and why are we placing so many FTEs towards mental health and just well-being for students and that type of support? And that's the reason. I mean, you're here just talking, you know, outside of the administration, in a different lens, just in a practical what you see every day. I think that this is just another layer that makes the job of teaching and being in schools with students even harder. Every few years that go by, it gets tougher and tougher. The students that we get come and they need more support, and you are the, really the epitome of what you do in your job. You have a commanding presence in Hawthorne and now El Rodeo, and people really do look up to you. I know that, I want to specifically thank you for presenting and being selected to present because that is an excellent representation of our entire school district when you present at a state level. So thank you very much for that and for being here tonight.
Thank you so much. Thank you guys so very much for listening to me, and thank you for everyone else. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
The next item we have is the BHHS Girls Varsity Flag Football Team, but we have, there's good news, there's bad news. The bad news is, they will not be here tonight. The good news is, is that's because they, right now, are at the playoffs. They made it. So, yeah, yeah, yeah. So they are not here tonight. We wish them the best of success.
Next time.
We are now at public comment. We do have one speaker. We have Katie Warren. And you have six minutes as Virgin Azian. Seated her time, so you have six minutes.
Thank you. Are you going to count me in, or how does this work?
I'm going to give you the opportunity to start first, and then I'll...
For the record, this is my first public comment, so I'm learning as we go. All right. My name is Catherine Warren, and I am the BHEA president. I am also the seventh-grade resource teacher at BV. I would like to take the next few minutes to address the board and Dr. Bregge about technology in the classroom. There is a misconception that teachers use technology to babysit their classes. This is simply not true. The truth is that we have remarkable teachers using technology as a valuable resource to meet the mission and vision of BHUSD. Last Wednesday, the BVMS teachers gathered in the library, talked with friends, and waited for the meeting to begin. It looked like every other Wednesday until Jamie Tinter took over the meeting. He delivered a masterclass on artificial intelligence while demonstrating phenomenal pedagogical skills. Great teaching has three pillars. It meets the students where they are. It engages the students with their peers. And lastly, encourages students to continue asking questions about the topic, and more important... and more importantly, about themselves. Jamie Tinter met his students, the BVMS faculty where they were, by sending out a survey asking about their comfort and use with AI. Instead of teaching to the middle, he differentiated his lesson for teachers that have never used AI to teachers who are also fluent in coding and modern technology. During the lesson, he shared how he discovered AI and how it has helped him with his interests outside the classroom. He talked about his success and stumbling blocks. In doing so, he reminded us of our basic humanity and the courage it takes to dive into the unknown. By sharing his stories, he inspired his colleagues to use AI, despite it being new and somewhat scary to some of his more analog colleagues. Then he gave us an opportunity to test out AI for ourselves. Again, this section was differentiated, but this time by content. The teachers were engaged and enjoying a Wednesday morning PD. That laugh speaks for itself. I took that moment to look across the library. Teachers were smiling. None of them were correcting papers, and not a cellphone was out. It was truly remarkable teaching. Jamie then took, Jamie Tinter then took his PD one step further, and he invited all of the teachers to come to him and get help as they needed, supporting the district-wide goals of professional learning communities. One of the teachers he graciously took under his wing was myself and showed me how I can use AI in grant writing. I was so grateful for his generosity of time and spirit. When we talk about technology in the classroom, we are talking about extremely talented teachers. I see you up there. Using modern tools to create highly engaged learning environments, not only for students, but for teachers and parents and administrators and anyone else who has the pleasure of coming onto our campus. Teachers must have access to this technology for it prepares our students to realize their full potential in a modern world. When planning the next Teacher in Service Day, I encourage BHUSD to look inside the district for amazing talent. I hope you hire Jamie Tinter again because you did it right the first time. And I hope that all teachers across all of our schools get to experience his amazing professional development. I'd also like to encourage the cabinet and Dr. Bregge to look at the master craftsmen across all our schools from TK through 12th grade who use technology to fulfill the mission and vision of this district. In a few minutes, you're going to hear from amazing teachers about technology across the district, and I am excited to hear their presentation. Thank you so much for your time, and I got 30 seconds left.
All right, thank you. Can I get an approval for the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I will second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to, oh, the update on the educational technology.
We're just going to wait till it pops up here, if that's okay. Good evening, Board of Education members. First and foremost, I want to thank you for the opportunity for us to be able to present on our EdTech Committee. Our primary focus always is how are we integrating technology to make sure that we are aligning with not only our mission, but also our vision of just being able to have our students realize their full potential and to thrive within a integral and integrate into a complex and changing world. What we're going to do is, first and foremost, what I want to do is be able to thank our EdTech Committee themselves. As you can see here on the screen, we had a well-rounded group of individual teachers from across all four campuses within our district, ranging from each grade band in the elementary realm to we even have an instrumental music teacher, to PBIS coach. Some of them wear multiple hats, with also support of our district administration. It is a lengthy presentation, so we are going to hit the major topics. So I'm going to talk even faster. So I just want to thank them, first and foremost, of their time and effort. From a timeline standpoint, we started meeting back in August just because there is some community-based concerns just around the way that we leverage technology in the district. And so we set out to start looking at ed code. We started to review the literature that was provided by the community. We, I talked them into coming up here with me to be able to present all the work that they had found throughout the district. Exactly what Ms. Warren had stated is all the wonderful things that are happening across the district within our classrooms from our teachers. Just from a history standpoint, we in 2017 actually started on this journey. So this isn't something new to the community itself. We actually had a Educational Technology Committee that was comprised of hundreds of people at the time. We had students involved, we had teachers involved, the administration involved, parents involved in this process of being able to select a framework that we knew was research-based on how to integrate educational technology into our classroom. You can see that the SAMR model was the model that the Board of Education and even those that voted for the bond to utilize taxpayers' dollars to purchase educational technology for our district stood behind the SAMR model. You will see that proudly, I would say this as an Assistant Superintendent of Education Services, that we are in the transformation stages. We did come out of COVID where it felt a little Wild West, but we got right back on track of being able to streamline and pull back some of those extra things that we needed to purchase at the time because we were in home learning. But we are in that redefinition and modification stages, the transformation piece. It's not a substitution in our classrooms. Our teachers aren't utilizing devices in replace of a worksheet. They're utilizing it to advance the four walls that the students are residing in. So we do have a model and a framework for the integration and professional development for our teachers in integration, and it's developmental from TK through 12th grade. So the next three slides, real fast, are really common themes that you're going to see throughout the research that they've done, whether that be through literature researches, our own survey data. But you're going to see three themes. You're going to see digital literacy, which now what we all need to be aware of is also part of ed code. And so that's something that we are already advanced in. You actually heard it earlier from two different people. Jamie and Katie even mentioned the way that we utilize technology in our district is to teach digital literacy skills. In addition to that, you'll see in mentions around Common Core standards and how that advances the work of our students meeting standards, becoming self-directed learners, which Jamie had mentioned, strengthening strengths and limitations of various technological tools, using technology in digital media strategically and capably. In addition to something that you aren't aware of is there is assembly bill around a dyslexia screener. And this is something that we know going into 25, 26, when you talk about utilizing technology at such an early age, such as TK or Kinder or ONE. I have this slide here because it's really around assessment. So they're going to be talking about three kinds of threads. Digital literacy, the way that aligns and pushes our standards further, and the way that we assess kids. And we will have, be charged to assess all students in Kinder through second grade in 25, 26 for dyslexia. And we know that we already have tools in place, such as iReady, that we are equipped to handle this challenge. That being said, I'm going to hand it over to our EdTech Committee. They're going to introduce each of themselves as they start to talk. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Dustin. I'm Lisa Beeler. I'm the Instructional Technology Coach at Horace Mann. You might, I think on the introduction screen, it said I4Coach, but my job is really about instruction and helping teachers effectively introduce technology that's rooted in our standards. So the committee surveyed our elementary teachers, and 100% of those teachers are using less than 60 minutes of technology per day. This is in line with that recommendation from the American Academy of Pediatrics that children between the ages of 2 to 12 should have no more than 60 minutes of screen time per day. During those 60 minutes or less, teachers chunk technology use with breaks, physical activity, maybe physical breaks, brain breaks. This prevents the negative physical effects that can be seen with unstructured technology use.
All right. Hi, I'm Jocelyn Brezner, I could teach kindergarten at El Rodeo. Thank you. Thank you so much. I told him to do that. So I actually, just before I begin with this slide, I started here in 2014 before we had any devices in the classroom. And I remember that we were just trying to get one or two iPads in the classroom at that time when I started teaching kindergarten. And now, you know, over 10 years later, I'm now, or we're all now at one-to-one devices, which is pretty amazing. And I was on that committee that Dr. Seaman mentioned. And seeing how things have grown in the last 10, 11 years in this district with regards to technology is truly remarkable, and it is one of the things that sets us apart as a district across the country when you look at how other schools are functioning in relation to technology. So looking at this data here on the screen, we actually surveyed both of our schools, our elementary schools and their teachers, and asked them, how does one-to-one, how are you using one-to-one technology? What are you using it the most for? Meaning, how are your students using it? And how is it benefiting you, which I'll get into as well? And if you kind of pay attention to those orange, pink, and purple pieces towards the bottom-left-ish, I'm going to get into those. But I just want you to take note that those are the biggest chunks here. And you'll see that some of the other things on here, researching, creativity, collaborating, email, critical thinking, those kinds of things. But I'm going to really dive into those bigger pieces on this slide here. So you'll see that those big pieces actually represent math and ELA practice. For example, iReady is just one of those pieces. Assessments and Google Classroom and CSO, depending on what grade you're in, what grade you teach. And so those are kind of translated in a few different ways. One-to-one instruction is directly correlated to one-to-one devices and vice versa. And what I mean by that is that when we look at one-to-one instruction, we're thinking about how we're using these one-to-one devices as extensions of our instruction as teachers. They are extensions. So these pieces that I'm going to kind of explain a little bit more, I want you to just remember that, they are extensions. And so looking at things like the DRA, which is a reading assessment that we use in all grade levels, or not TK. Well, I guess sometimes if they're ready in TK. But DRA is a way for us to measure what reading level students are currently at and progressing toward. ESGI is really common for our primary grades. And it's basically, I mean, it's unbelievable. It was developed by teachers a million years ago. But it's a one-on-one assessment. So basically, I can pull, and I'm just going to use a name, I can pull Dustin over for a one-on-one assessment with ESGI, and I can create the assessments that I want to use. So let's say that in one of our other curriculum, maybe there isn't something that gives me as much granular information or data. I can create what I need or what my team decides we need for information to inform instruction, and I can pull Dustin over, and I can do that one-on-one with him. If I want to know what letters he knows, what letters can he identify? What letter sounds does he know? What numbers can he identify? What shapes does he know? I can create that one-on-one, those one-on-one assessments, and then use that data in like literally 1,000 different ways. And I'm happy to show you if you're interested in one day. I can use it like 1,000 different ways, and I use it to create groups. I use it to decide, okay, what does Dustin know? So Dustin doesn't know the letter sounds B, C, and F. Okay, all right, great. So now I'm going to go into iReady, which is the, one of the squares that you see there. I'm going to go into iReady, and I'm going to assign those exact letters on iReady for him to practice that are just for him. And then if I have another student, I have Nikki who's in another group, and she doesn't know, I don't know, A, F, again, F is hard. And I, right, I can go into iReady, and I can assign specifically to Nikki exactly what she needs to practice just those letters, which is amazing. And 10 years ago, I could do that. It just was a little bit different and maybe not as efficient and not as personalized. And then I can watch, I can go in and watch the data, and I can see, how many minutes did she spend on that? Did she pass those lessons that I sent her? Did she take a lot of time with that one letter, but the other two were really easy for her? Like, I can get all of that information just from iReady. And the same goes for CSO. CSO is one of the most amazing pieces of technology that has, I think, ever come into elementary hands. A lot of the times, elementary schools get shafted when it comes to technology in terms of programming. CSO is pretty unbelievable. And for those of you that were in my class during online learning, CSO was how I saw every single thing that my kids did, and I was able to provide immediate feedback to them with my voice because some of them couldn't read yet. With my voice, I was able to literally talk back and forth using CSO to give them immediate, real-time feedback, which I cannot do with a lot of other things, especially if I'm holding different groups throughout the week consisting of different kids, and they're on a rotation. This allows me to do it in real time, which is pretty amazing. Something about immediate feedback that I'm going to also mention is, some of us are familiar with John Hattie. Anybody in here? Okay. So John Hattie is kind of like the godfather of education at this point in time. He's the most widely-read education expert in the world. So if you don't know him, you should look him up. And he came up with a list of 150 top influences on education and on student learning, the impacts on student learning. Originally, it was 138. It's been updated to 150. Number two on that list, number two, the second most impactful influential component when it comes to student success, excuse me, is that immediate feedback, which they call self-reporting, right? Self-reported grades. So in our world, that's immediate feedback. But it's actually number two on Hattie's list, and we know it on his list as self-reported grades. So that was something that I just wanted to make sure that we share because John Hattie is a big deal, and he supports this type of thing. So the other thing I wanted to mention, and I'm not going to read these, but along with our survey data that I shared on that pie chart, I wanted to also share some of the quotes, some of the things that our teachers said when we said, we asked them, what does one-to-one instruction do for you as a teacher? What does one-to-one instruction do for you as a class, for your children? And some of the things, we only picked four quotes because a lot, these four quotes kind of represented what a lot of people were saying. These were kind of repeated ideas that it was immediate personalized feedback, personalization, immediate feedback, express ideas in multiple formats for those students who learn differently, which literally all of them do, right? They're all different. They all learn in different ways. And so these were repeated over and over again. And so we wanted to share that with you all just to kind of see that these represented a lot of what the teachers were feeling in terms of how one-to-one devices affected them as teachers and their students as learners. And this is just a piece on real-time feedback from ISTI, which is the International Society for Technology and Education. A lot of us attend the ISTI conference every year. And so I thought it was important to include a piece of that just for your entertainment, I guess. But basically, it's talking about real-time feedback, which again, number two on John Hattie's list of most influential things when it comes to student learning, just to remind you of that. Okay, that's it.
All right. Hi, my name's Kevin Repick. I'm a fifth-grade teacher at Horace Mann. I have the privilege of just quickly going over some of the next piece of what we did, and that was to look at, after talking to our teachers and doing the research internally and seeing how our teachers are using technology, it was important for us to look at the research and the studies and see what are the desired outcomes that we should be seeing from our students. And so, sorry, it was heartening to look and see that there's some common ground here. There's some through lines that one thing that was important is digital literacy. So we know that as our students are learning and living and growing up in an increasingly digital world, it's important for them to develop those skills. And you're going to hear more about that later in our presentation as well. And then the other main thing was personalized learning. So a lot of what Jocelyn just talked about was how can we target our students individually... about was how can we target our students individually exactly where they need to be met? So, I, as a teacher, can differentiate my lessons, and I can, you know, assess my class and figure out what should I be teaching next. But one thing that I cannot do is deliver 29 lessons to 29 different students that are all completely targeted to what they want, or not what they want, sorry, but what they need. So it was heartening to see that all of the research that we found supports the exact outcomes that we should be seeing from our students in terms of digital literacy, deeper critical thinking skills, and personalized targeted learning. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, everyone. I'm Jimmy Conway. I teach third grade at Horace Mann Elementary. And I'm going to talk in more detail about the iReady program that the elementary schools use. I know that Jocelyn talked about the iReady program. This is a very important tool and resource that elementary school teachers use. And I just want to mention that it is an extension, it doesn't replace the teachers' lessons. And we give an iReady diagnostic assessment at the beginning of the school year to see where students are at, also to see what areas students need more support and more practice. The great thing about the iReady resource is that, for instance, for language arts, it breaks it down into different areas, such as reading comprehension for fiction, nonfiction, students' vocabulary development, also their phonemic skills, so that as teachers, when we look at the data, we can see what areas students need more support or more practice. So it's an assessment that we, the diagnostic assessment we give at the beginning of the year, and then we give the iReady diagnostic three other times during the school year, and to see their growth, and to see how the iReady practice is helping them improve and develop in areas where they need extra support and practice. So if you look at this data here, this is, this slide is for mathematics, and it shows that students who spend 30 minutes or more a week working on and practicing these skills, areas where they need more practice, it shows that for mathematics, there's 143% growth. And they outperform students that are not practicing these skills in iReady. And I think I've spoken to a lot of teachers at my school and on my team, and what's really helpful about the iReady program is that you get immediate feedback on areas that students are struggling with, and which students need that extra support. And I've actually polled students after looking at this data and helping them with these learning targets. So it's a helpful tool for teachers. And then the next screen is showing in reading. So in our district, we saw that students who practiced their learning skills for 30 minutes or more each week, we saw that in reading, there was 159% growth. And again, as teachers, we want, we know that students have different learning needs, and, you know, students learn in different ways, and it's very important that we differentiate what those learning needs are. And it's, it's really valuable for teachers to see that all of our students are growing and developing, because they all start at a certain point at the beginning of the school year, and we don't expect to have one goal for all of our students, but when we see that individually, they are making improvements, it's, you know, it's great to see that, and the students get a satisfaction from seeing their improvement as well. But again, I just want to end this elementary portion by just saying, these types of programs like iReady and learning programs do not replace the teacher lessons. Obviously, all of these skills we are teaching in the classroom. These are just extensions and extra practice for students to help them improve and develop. Thank you.
Thank you, school board members, Dr. Bregge, Dr. Seaman, for giving us the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Gretchen Gabreski. I'm the instructional technology coach at Beverly Vista Middle School.
And my name is Verina Ayazian, and I'm a math, coding, and avid teacher at Beverly Vista Middle School.
We really appreciate the community's concerns about technology's impact on child development. And tonight, we hope to provide some clarity and ease your concerns by sharing insights from our teachers and students. We're also going to show you how and why BVMS intentionally integrates technology to enhance learning and align with our academic goals. So we're going to dive in by discussing why we use technology in the first place. Here in California, the State Board of Education sets learning standards at each grade levels. These serve like roadmaps for us, guiding us to ensure that students are gaining the necessary knowledge and skills. Technology plays a critical role in supporting these standards. At BVMS, we make sure our tech use is aligned to academic goals, especially the Common Core state standards. This way, technology isn't just a flashy tool to keep students interested, but it's a means to helping them achieve meaningful learning outcomes and essential skills. So if we take a look at this slide that's being presented here, what teachers are telling us is pretty interesting, that even though the Common Core doesn't explicitly mention technology skills, these tech skills are woven into different standards. Sometimes it's obvious, but other times it's in subtle ways, telling us that technology isn't just an add-on, but it's a fundamental part of how students learn. Let me give you an example of how these skills are woven into the standards. Take standard RST.6-8.1, which is a reading standard for science and technical subjects. It says that students should cite specific textual evidence to support analysis of science and technical text. While this standard clearly focuses on literacy skills for these subjects, the process of finding, analyzing, and citing text naturally involves a range of technology skills. So even though it's not spelled out, technology is a key player here. On this next slide, we asked teachers to pinpoint key indicators of student success that align with our district's mission and vision. And a significant, 86% of teachers highlighted the personalized student-centered learning as foundational to our educational approach. And 80% of teachers see digital citizenship and literacy as crucial, indicating a strong link between tailored learning experiences and building essential digital skills. On the next slide, we're taking a look at how technology fits into instruction. And it's really important to understand here what this really looks like in the classroom. And this 72%, I need to emphasize that this is teachers using technology, not students. So take that Fiosonic, for example, that's presenting this slide right here. That is not a TV. That is a powerful learning tool. It is a touchscreen, it's interactive, it has embedded tools. Students can throw answers to that board digitally, and one of those lives in every classroom at BVMS. And if you were to walk around this school and look at that display in various classrooms, you're going to see things, teachers displaying things like virtual field trips, educational videos, learning targets, essential questions, a lab simulation. And technology isn't always about instruction. Teachers also use it for practical tasks too, like taking attendance or creating a digital hall pass. And I know that bar graph has a lot going on on that slide, but that's also the reality. Teachers are using lots of different tools and methods to reach students. And that bar graph helps to break down those tools and practices based on the ones they rely on the most. And we're going to move on to the next slide, but I do want you to keep in mind the high rating of assessment data. On this next slide, we're looking at the estimated number of minutes, time, students are averaging they're using technology during class. And one of the most powerful tools, and a real favorite from that previous slide, was using technology for real-time assessments. And I know the words formative assessment, summative assessment, sound very formal, but that's not always the case. It can be as simple as a one-question digital exit ticket, where a teacher is assessing student understanding. And these tools are very powerful for teachers, because it helps teachers monitor student understanding on the spot. And this is really great, because then teachers can quickly adapt their instruction based on what they're seeing, and, and making learning more personalized and in the moment. Now that we've taken a look at how teachers are using technology to share learning goals and content with teachers, I'll go back to the other slide. It's really important to also remember that at BVMS Middle School, students are taking two elective classes. And some of these elective classes are things like coding, audio media production, robotics, STEM, digital photography. And this is important, because when you're seeing those larger chunks of time of technology use, it's directly related to the student's schedule and the electives they're taking. And this also suggests that student technology use aligns with teachers' expectations, that it falls within that 0 to 30-minute time range. On the next slide, these results are showing that technology and learning goes far beyond academic content. Students are telling us that they've improved in areas like research skills, creativity, and problem-solving, and this is really great, because it means technology is preparing them for real-life challenges. Take, for example, research skills. Students are learning how to find reliable information in a world full of data. When it comes to creativity, they're learning how to create presentations, create digital narratives, code robots. And when we're thinking about problem-solving, they're learning how to tackle challenges, test solutions, and adapt when things don't go as planned. And these are all skills that go far beyond what a student's going to use in the classroom. So I hope I've eased your concerns and clarified how BVMS thoughtfully integrates technology into instruction. Our goal is to use technology with purpose, to align it to standards, and to tailor it to student and the community's needs. I'm going to pass along the presentation now to Ms. Ayazian, who's going to share some additional results of our survey.
Hi. Thank you for having us here to share. One thing that we didn't mention that I think is very important, over 400 students responded to our survey, so the data you're seeing from the student end is a good, over 70% of our students have responded. So we wanted to know, from the student perspective, where does technology help them learn best? And they did tell us, mostly in their science and elective classes, based on our chart right there, this was expected. Our students, within the elective classes, for example, they learn the language of coding, the language of Python through their coding classes. Robotic students use block coding, it's a VEX code, to code robots within their STEM classes. Students use something known as white box learning to create simulations within their aerospace class. And these are just some of the electives we offer at BVMS. Within the science and elective classes, technology is not only used for simulations and interactive models by helping students visualize complex concepts, but gives them access to a wide range of resources and allows them to choose what is best from everything that's available up to date. Students are able to research and collaborate on one document, completing labs and projects, and getting that immediate feedback from teachers. The lower percentage of the chart identifies academic support classes, PE, and VAPA, which require more hands-on experiences for our students through creativity and reteaching. Of course, our dance and PE classes focus on the physical activity as expected. The majority of teachers at BVMS expect students to use 0 to 20 minutes of technology at home. What are they using the technology for? So, our students tell us that they're using this technology to access their homework, access their Google Classroom for assignments, as well as their Aries. Number four is the tools they use online to study on their devices, such as Kami, any Google apps, Kahoot quizzes. Okay? One of the standards I do also want to mention is our sixth-grade ELA standard, W6.6. It states that, and I quote, "Use technology, including the internet, to produce and publish writing, as well as to interact and collaborate with others. Demonstrate sufficient commands of keyboarding skills to type a minimum of three pages in only one sitting." Okay? As you can see from our teacher survey, they gave us some quotes about how is technology really impacting their classes? And you can tell from our teachers that the use of technology in our classrooms at BVMS is intentional. The use of technology in our classrooms aligns with our Common Core standards. The use of technology in our classrooms encourages digital citizenship. Within BVMS, technology supports students in building those digital literacy skills we need to type those three pages in one sitting, exposing them to both interactive tools and teaching them how to do research. Students are able to collaborate, developing problem-solving skills, and becoming college and career-ready for high school.
Yeah, some of us, some of us are less vertically, oh, yes, vertically aligned, but on the shorter side. Okay, so, good evening. I'm Nancy Mini-Cotzi. I'm one of the instructional technology coaches at the high school. And we are going to start this off by talking about some of the additional benefits of, excuse me, of technology in education. I really want to focus on the first one, improving teaching productivity and reducing teacher busy work. By allowing teachers to automate and offload a lot of tasks that, to technology, it allows them to spend more time working directly with students and working on projects for students, curriculum that they will deliver, and so forth. Technology allows students with special needs to access the curriculum in much better ways than they could without it. We have a lot of assistive tools that are used across the district, not just at the high school, of course, that help those students access the curriculum. Technology allows students to explore, build their own knowledge and understanding, and it allows them to create inclusive learning environments. One of the examples that I like, we are using a tool called FigJam, which is an interactive collaborative tool. And one of the things you can do with FigJam is students can put up virtual sticky notes. So you can have every student in your class of 30 or 34 students answer a question, which is something that you can't really do one at a time. Everybody put their answer up, and then the whole class can discuss, they can categorize, they can move things around, and really, everybody's voice can be heard. That allows students to develop teamwork and collaboration skills. Teachers can build and share curriculum. Student performance improves, and students' ability to self-direct their learning grows.
Hi, I'm Karen Legola. I'm the other instructional technology coach at the high school. We surveyed our teachers, and this pie chart that you're looking at on the slide is our student tech use in class. This is not including assessments, it is just what they're using within their period. And I'd like to draw your attention to the right side, the yellow and the blue. That is less than 15 minutes, 21%, and the 15 to 30 minutes is 33.3%. So that's half of our population using technology for 30 minutes or less during a period. On the other side of the pie chart, you'll see that we do have some at 30 to 45, and then we jump kind of to the 60-plus minutes. Those classes that are using it that much during the period, and again, we're high school, so our period- schools, so our periods are 90-minute block periods, please take that into consideration. So when I talk about a zero to 30, or 15 minutes to 30 minutes, that's out of a 90-minute period. But the classes that fall in the red, or the periods that fall in the red, those are our courses that are listed on the far right side of the slide. Those are classes that we could not even give without technologies that are totally based on technology all the time. That's ILC, it's our business finance program, music technology, robotics, coding, animation, KBEV, which is, you know, we all use every day, everybody has, is aware of that. So that's what that, that side of the screen is showing. I'm going to introduce Justin, a teacher who's going to talk to us about like what we do during block schedule.
Hi, I'm Justin Clausel, instrumental music teacher and PBIS coach at the high school. I have the opportunity to talk to you a little bit about some frameworks that our teachers use in their teaching instructional models, and how the technology might be integrated into that. The data that Karen showed you just previously is aggregate data about student use minutes, right, per period, which you could, you know, extrapolate out to the entire day. That's your weekly screen time report that you get on your iPhone, right? There's a lot more granular data for us to like look into, and what are you using? How are you using it? Why are you using it? A parent that will intentionally and thoughtfully integrate a cellular device into their children's lives is going to restrict screen use, they're going to restrict app use, and they're going to be very intentional and thoughtful about how their child starts to use that personal device. We, as teachers, have the opportunity to intentionally and thoughtfully integrate technology into our classrooms. First of all, by adopting instructional frameworks and models that support student learning through the use of especially our block schedule. And so I have the opportunity to share some of those frameworks with you, and then our other presenter will share some more details about how they're using that technology. You might see a classic 30-30-30 split, just breaking it up into three even sections with some brain breaks in between. You might see a workshop model where a teacher might deliver a mini lesson, and then students are interacting with each other individually, maybe using technology throughout the classroom with some breaks in the middle and a class wrap-up at the end. You might see a station rotation, where the teacher's giving an introduction to the day and the activities, students are rotating around throughout the classroom, interacting in different chunks in short spurts. You might see a lab model, where a class needs more time to complete a lab, to do a write-up, to make an essay, et cetera. And you'll also see performances in presentations, whether that's using technology or not, students responding to presentations using their technology. But these are just some examples of how teachers are organizing their classes and their instructional time during the day, and then using different things that will be explained to you next.
Back to our data. This is how does a student, how does student technology use support learning in the classroom? So again, this was asked to our teachers, how are, how is student technology use supporting learning? So if we look just at the top, we can see that it's formative and summative assessment. Again, a lot of our assessment, as you heard from BVMS as well, is done digitally for different purposes. It's not just we're testing every week. It is in the form of just knowledge checks that we use technology for. There's a lot of tools that teachers use that are just to assess what they know. They might be used within that first 30-minute block before the break, so the teacher can then inform instruction for the second part of that block schedule, so they might throw in an assessment tool. The next one on the list there that you see is content creation. This is students being able to create and present and share their knowledge in a creative way, in a way that they choose. It could be a podcast, it could be a slide presentation like you're seeing tonight. We offer them a wide variety of ways that they can show that what they know. And the last one on this slide that I'm going to draw your attention to is the research and media literacy, because that is something that's really important, and especially in the high school level, when students are constantly on databases and they need to understand where to find, find tools that are, or research that is correct, that is valuable, how to evaluate the sources, how to know what to use, how to know what to use, and how to just navigate that. And another part of that is how to ask the question to get to that data. So they have to, on a database, be able to ask the system to search for it on Google. We have to be able to search properly to get to what we need. And those skills are based within that media literacy. Another forum here, this is how do you use, how do teachers use technology to support learning? And again, the number one thing on the top of that list is creating content. Never before have teachers been able to differentiate curriculum so well for their students, and to bring in outside sources that can address the needs of the classroom, our culture. They can bring in things that students will respond to, so they'll be more engaged in what they're learning in the classroom. And technology allows them to augment what we have in our curriculum and make it personalized for our district, for our school. The communicating and student, with students and families is also the second one on the list. This is really huge for us. Our students and teachers communicate through email, they communicate through Google Classroom, they communicate through Parents Square, and all of those things have translation features. So we can communicate with families that we never were able to communicate with as easily before. We can communicate with new students that come to us without speaking English, and we can help them learn the language, because now we have tools, and translation tools, that allow us to do that.
It's my, I'm back. So, we asked teachers how the use of educational technology supported their learning goals in the classroom. And we got a lot of answers, but again, like the other quotes that you saw, really, there was a lot of the same type of answer that showed up again and again. And they talked about how it allowed them to tailor lessons to student needs, how it allowed them to differentiate. I want to point out on that second quote, the teacher said, "Time students spend on their computers is limited." That teacher and all our teachers are cognizant of how much time can be spent on technology, how much time they can use in their lessons to make sure that they are always delivering instruction that is going to benefit students. Another thing that I'd really like to point out is that the use of technology, in that last quote, talks about faster, more detailed feedback and more efficient communication with students. Everybody knows that the feedback that you get before you turn in your paper is a lot more usable than the feedback that you get after you've already got the grade, because when you hand a student a paper and you say, "You need to fix this, this, and this to get an A," the student is going to go fix that. But if you give them the paper and say, "Oh, you should have fixed this, this, and this, you gotta be," the kid is going to go, "Yeah, gotta be." So it really, the use of technology, both to, for communication and through the use of Google Classroom, Google Docs, teachers can give feedback while students are still working, that helps students improve what they are producing. It helps them improve their learning. So, technology does a lot of those things. It also allows us very much to individualize, like they mentioned for the elementary school. It allows us to differentiate and give students exactly what they need, exactly when they need it. Whoops, did I go backwards? Oh, I did go right, okay. So I know there is a lot of concern and even discussion about how technology can affect student well-being. And one thing that we found, I mean, I've found it in multiple places, but we highlighted one study for you, is how digital literacy can affect, can affect well-being. So, in the olden days, back when I was in school, we had reading, writing, speaking, and listening. Those were the four literacies. But now there are six, because it's reading, writing, speaking, listening, reading, or understanding interpreting media, and creating media. Because those things are an integral part of today's life. And so, what they have found is students who are technologically, who are digitally literate, are more comfortable and better able to engage in online discussions, participate online, which leads to higher well-being. Maybe it isn't as high as before we're talking about, but it allows them to be at a better, in a better state, because they are comfortable and they are able to interpret what they're seeing. Students with higher digital literacy scores have higher mental well-being. And similarly, having less digital literacy correlates with lower sense of well-being. Now, that doesn't mean that students should spend all the time online so that they can become more digitally literate, but it does mean that we need to be sure that we are providing students with those necessary skills so that they can be on and offline using those skills, and have improved well-being. And additionally, talking about reading, so digital literacy is a broader window, if you will. Online reading is a different thing. It's part of digital literacy, but it's a different thing. So, online reading is not the same as offline reading, and it requires different skills. Now, one of those skills is the ability to read, to look at, look at letters and decode them and put them together into words and sentences and paragraphs. And that skill at the beginning should be done in print, and we do prioritize print in early elementary in BHUSD. However, by high school, online reading is pretty much the exclusive way that students do their research, right? Because if you have an encyclopedia that is, you know, not being used as a doorstop, even though I liked to read them back in the day, now kids are getting their information online, and adults are getting information online, because it is more up-to-date and it's easier to access. You can get a much broader point of view by looking at research from different countries, different states. So, students need to know how to do that research, and as Karen alluded earlier, they need to formulate appropriate questions. It's not just what is my research question, but it's how am I going to phrase that for Google or for the database? And if I am using Google, how am I going to know which sources are the ones that I can trust? Which ones are the ones that have reliable information? Once I've found those, then I need to know how to take notes, how to put that information together, how to synthesize it, and then create a presentation, create a document, create something that I'm going to share back out to demonstrate my learning. All those skills online are different, because when you're reading online, you might have an ad pop-up. You might need to know where to click, to go to a link, or not to click, because you need to stay and focus. You might need to work around the poorly-coded webpage that has three different font sizes on it. And all those things take brain power, additional to the brain power that is required just to read. So students need to get more and more practice online reading, which is what we are doing. We're building them up from elementary through middle school and high school, because when students go to college or go to careers, that's where they're going to be doing reading. Most colleges now have online textbooks. There are not as many physical textbooks out there anymore, and so we need to prepare our students to be successful in those realms.
And that leads us to the, what we focus on in high school, right? They come to us in high school, and our goal is to open as many doors for them for when they leave high school. No matter what their path is, we want to make sure they're ready to go down it. This is two reports here, two from LinkedIn and Forbes. These are in-demand skills. These are from CEOs and from some companies that this is what they look for in their new employees. This is what they want to see on resumes, and this is what we focus on. And what I hope you've heard tonight is what we do, not only as we're building these skills for strategic thinking, presentation skills, you've heard a lot, critical thinking. Over on the right, you'll see AI and big data proficiency. We really haven't addressed the elephant in the AI room here tonight at all, but that is a skill that they're looking for students to know, how to handle that, how to use it properly to get what that company needs from it. Because more and more, we're seeing AI that's geared towards specific industries. So our students are going to need to know how to deal with that. And on that list is our technology literacy, which is also on this list, which is the Future Jobs Report. This is 2023, this comes out every year, and it has not come out for 2024. But this focuses on the skills on the rise, and the top three are creative thinking, analytical thinking, and technological literacy. So tonight, we have shown you that we are building these skills from kindergarten all the way through high school. We are intentional with the vertical alignment of iPads in early elementary, Chromebooks in middle elementary and middle school, and then Windows machines, because that's technological literacy. They need to be proficient on multiple platforms. So we are introducing them to multiple platforms so that they're comfortable no matter what they are. It's almost like different languages when you think about technology like that. If you're a Mac user or a Windows user, you know what I mean, because it's a different language. And we want our students to be able to sit down, because when they go to work, they're going to get the laptop that they were given, right? So they knew how, have to know how to use it. And the same thing is true about the skills, like we've talked about with reading, they all start and they all work their way, so that when students leave us, they can go into whatever they want, because we've prepared them from kindergarten through. And with that, I thank you very much, and I turn it back over to Dr. Seaman.
And that, we just leave it up to you guys. So I want to thank the tech committee, we, over the years, we hadn't had an opportunity to be able to do a presentation, to be transparent to the community on how we actually utilize, what are the times, how much minutes instructionally within the classroom. The board also has a document that we'll also put online as well, where our purchase ed tech for elementary level, one of the questions in previous meetings, the Board of Education had asked, what is teacher-facing and what is student-facing? What are we actually investing our taxpayer dollars within? And that list is actually in front of you. It gives you a description of what the app is or the instructional tool is, and who actually uses it. I left my water bottle in that classroom. I need it. So at this point, if there's any questions, if not, we want to thank you guys for your time.
Phenomenal. I would like to go around, any comments or questions?
Yeah, just, I don't have any questions. Thank you all for spending the time, getting some of these questions answered for the community. I think it's important for people to understand, I still would encourage people, if they do have a chance, to visit some of these classrooms. I know in my last year doing the Now Know-And-Know series, I saw some amazing work, Ms. Presnick, I'm looking at you, using technology to engage students and really promote learning. So I was, I was mulling all this over, because I think there's, there's sometimes, might be a disconnect. You know, when I, when I started as a student in school, we were listening on a, on a record player, right? An actual vinyl, and then it evolved to cassettes, and then it evolved to CDs, and now we stream music. We, we showed our media was projectors, right? Kids, how to learn how to thread projectors and wheel projectors around the school, whatever teacher was showing a film. We started teaching with chalkboards, we moved to overhead projectors and marker boards, right? Now we have short throws and things like this. So a lot of technology that has come through education has been to facilitate a teacher's ability to tackle material quicker and more efficiently. And when they can do that, they can teach better, flat-out. There was, there was no doubt about it. When, when, you know, the VHS replaced the film projector in a classroom, it's a lot easier, right? It's a lot easier to rewind the tape, it's a lot easier to store things, it's a lot easier to load it. And, which gave more teachers access and the desire to share some things that maybe they would not have shared previously. We went from, from Abacus to a calculator to a scientific calculator in math. We went from magnifying glasses to microscopes to electron microscopes, you know, be able to, all of these things bettered our ability to teach and students' ability to learn. And I think that's something that's, that's as much as, as this technology assists teachers, it also gives students better access to material. And I think that's something that people sometimes overlook, because as adults, we know most of the things that the kids are learning. So it's hard for us to see that for a child who you haven't So, it's hard for us to see that for a child who you haven't necessarily scaffold it or something for, that they need some of this technology to better access when normally they would not be able to. So, and I think that's important for people to understand. And I thought about all of these things, how we went from a typewriter to keyboarding to word processing to, you know, eventually now we're going to have, you know, AI basically be able to type for, you can at least speak and generate your words by speech, which also teaches you how to speak clearly because these dictation tools, even now, huh? You know, oh, you said, I want to go to McDonald's. No, I said, read, Old McDonald has a farm, that kind of thing. So, I think, what is the difference? What is the big disconnect? And I believe that that's probably social media. I think social media has villainized technology in some realms, and I think we have to be really cautious and be able to separate for ourselves, for our students, for the parents that, when we talk about technology, we are not, not once in this presentation did people say the word "social media" tonight, not once. Because what we are doing is not that, but what our kids are suffering from is exactly that. And I think people need to be aware of that. As my daughter would say, "Preach, King." So, I think, somebody had mentioned, Nancy, I think you had said podcasts, or something came up about a podcast. And I thought, how exciting would it be, and maybe some teachers are doing this already, to, instead of doing a report on a historic figure, to actually have two students do an interview, a podcast with that historic figure? The depth that that person would have to then study that historical figure to be able to be that figure, not just tell about that figure. And that's something that technology gives us, right? The ability to do that, where you could not do that before. And it's not about, yes, you could sit in front of a classroom and present your report, but by actually creating it as a podcast, one, older students would be more excited about it because it's something they can relate to a little easier. And that's always a better way to teach when you can relate something to a student. And then, two, the content would be different because you'd be able to, it wouldn't be subject to one performance of that. You'd really dive into and make it something to behold. So, I think that my plug is yay for this stuff, for this technology, as long as it's continued to be used responsibly and where it really benefits both, all of the learning partners involved, right? Because also, you know, we also didn't think about how the technology benefits our administrators, Dr. Seaman, because of the data you guys can collect and help guide decisions because of the real-time information you're getting from this technology. So, with all that, I give the caveat that I continue to believe that California continues to lower the bar on standards, and as a state, they're going in the wrong direction, not as a district, we're not, but as a state, we're not. And I think we need to be wary of that and be very conscientious of it and make sure that as we adapt and evolve, that we don't fall into that and continue to push our students in this district above and beyond those standards. So, it's no surprise to us if and when we start accelerating with our performances, we know what the reason is, right? Because we have properly adapted the use of technology into our students' lives and made them not just learn faster, but learn better, right? And then that will in turn get them to excel on all of our testing, all of the SATs, from I-ready to SATs, the whole gamut will have better performance. That in the end should be the goal. So, with that, I defer to my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thirteen years, you don't have to applaud.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for being here. Dr. Seaman, thank you for the presentation and especially to the entire committee for your time and your care, and I certainly appreciate that everybody is a united front on how important this is. So, I get that, and I'm with you. I do understand that. I have my concerns, which I've shared with you. I think that this exercise is exceptionally important and integral to the transparency and maybe for you guys as well to sit and discuss, well, what are we all doing? What are we working on and what is the purpose of it? So, I thank you for taking the time to do that together. My concern, I want to start from an early childhood development perspective, okay? Tonight, we first heard from a speaker who emphasized his concern about the role of technology on our children and emphasized human touch, human touch, human touch. And so, please understand from where I'm sitting, there's a seesaw in the presentations, a little bit of the pendulum swinging because the first conversation we had, all of us this evening, where, and we were all on the same page, was about human touch. Now, we're having a completely different conversation, which is about technology. And they're not necessarily adverse to one another. I just want to point out a little bit of cognitive dissonance that I'm having about it personally, okay? Number one. Number two, in, early on in your packet, you share, according to the American Academy of Pediatrics, children between the ages of two and 12, which means for us, our TKers through some of our seventh graders should have no more than one hour of screen time a day. And I couldn't help but understand that each teacher is almost working in a silo because they're giving us their, oh, it's no more than 30 minutes a day, it's no more than 20 minutes a day, and I appreciate the honesty there. My concern is the cumulative adds up to well beyond that. And so, then when you go home, so this is per day, it's not per day at school, it's not per day at home, it's in, you know, between 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM when they're awake. So, already, what I'm understanding from the surveys, and even I would say the surveys should be unnecessary, I would think that we as a district would be able to monitor exactly to the minute, but I accept the surveys at face value. The surveys are already demonstrating that we are two, three, four, five times beyond what the AAP is prescribing. That's a concern to me. I don't blame any one teacher for that. I saw all teachers here who want to do the best for their students, the best, the most. They want to be excited about it. They want to deliver it in a way that's exciting to their students. They want to deliver it in a way where they can be with all different types of students within the same hour. So, what you guys are trying to do, that hit home with me. I understand it and I appreciate it. But what I am sharing is that my interpretation is, in a cumulative way, what it is adding up to is a lot of screen time.
So...
And I don't want you to feel attacked by me at all.
Not at all.
It's not my intention.
So, I just, I think with our community, sometimes when data's presented in isolation and not fully unpacked, there's an interpretation there. And so, this is an example where, when we talk about two to 12-year-olds, is that correct?
Yes.
I think that's what the slide states. And you'd mentioned sixth and seventh grade, so we're going to pull those two grades out of the conversation and initially focus on our elementary.
Sure.
Which is two through, oh, 10?
For us, yeah.
Two through 10? Yeah. I'm like, help, I don't have one of those.
Well, so we'll leave the preschool out of it, so we four-year-olds till 10-year-olds.
But I'm even going to, I'm going to approach it as a two to 10 first, where we did demonstrate through the data that we are under an hour per day that follows that guideline because they have a singleton classroom teacher. And that also collaborates with, whether that be that makerspace, whether that, and we have the teachers here to be able to justify through our PLC work, they do collaborate under those terms. So, technically, we're actually advanced because we actually don't give our kids, our TK kids, the iPads.
Hallelujah.
And I'm saying, in addition to, you're looking at all the elementary teachers, which they actually, third through third, fourth and fifth outnumber even our lower grades, which utilize it even less technology. And so, we're looking at an average, which we're still under that. Now, with our sixth and seventh, I agree that that is something that we look at. We have the rotating schedule, master schedule, and through the data that we collected, we started to pull apart the actual individual classes that were requiring additional screen time, so that way we made better decisions. Is it so heavy in certain areas? And how does that work in our master schedule so we're cognizant of, are we really plugging these kids in for five hours a day? So, we're getting down to that granular level.
Thank you.
So, knowing that that is being handled, that we are still in our elementary arena, still under that time, within that six, seven arena, depending on how old the kid is, I was the young one, Einstein, no, just kidding, that, how is that impacting our master schedule? What are those electives utilizing it for? How are we utilizing it in all of our core subject areas? And I appreciate the middle school for doing all that work.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, and that's why I'm very happy that we have gone through this exercise because I feel like maybe that means there's a little bit more harmony. But I will tell you that the cumulative effect is a lot.
Yep.
You know? And then, I do hear from parents of kindergartners, first graders, who are coming home, and then children are insisting on iPads at home so that they can continue the clever, they can continue the stuff. And so, I just want to let you know that you might think that you're doing a one hour or a half hour, but it's going home and it's being asked to be extended. I personally believe that the analog learning, based on the studies that were presented to us, based on the head of pediatric neurology at Cedars, I read all of those studies, and you know that I did, and I read all of these studies. And I read Hattie, and I read Hattie's sequel because when we were having this conversation back in the spring, we were at odds. And so, I looked it up, and I said, what does Hattie say about the use of technology? And that's why I bought his sequel. And even Hattie says, clear as day, TV was going to be the answer, and it wasn't the answer, and technology was going to be the answer, and technology is not the answer. And so, I worry, I worry about the desire for immediate feedback because I also worry that it doesn't teach the kids about grit and persistence and perseverance. And I'm a business attorney, and my clients all tell me, that's the hardest thing to find in the workplace right now, somebody who will dig in and do the work. And so, I'm just sharing that with all of you. I'm interested to see what my colleagues have to say. But to me, it adds up, and it adds up to more than what the experts are recommending. And I thank you all for your time on this.
Absolutely. Can I do things though?
Yes, anything.
Also, you had opened up with Jamie Weddell's presentation.
Yes.
And so, I just, also by design, I had reached out to Principal Keburn, asked, because I am a member of the board for the California Association of School Counselors, I knew Jamie's topic. And so, being able to demonstrate to the community that not only are we utilizing educational technology developmentally appropriate based off of our research and following frameworks that support educational learning, we also provide support within our schools for when those external issues or pressures come back and creep into our learning. And so, that was by design, is being able to share and show, hey, we not only provide as a school district, which not everybody does, our school counselors are equipped to have those conversations when social media or the cell phone creep in a negative way to support student learning, while our teachers have all been trained in being able to deliver instruction that follows the guidelines that are within the instructional minutes, and we're not plug-and-playing.
Yeah.
That demonstrates, I hope, to the majority of the community that we have not only the support, but we also have the instruction moving forward.
Right. I mean, I personally, I'm, you know, I say what I mean, and I mean what I say, and hopefully that's worth something. I personally do not believe in the iPads and the technology up through the second grade for me. Maybe I could, in a world in limited instances, live with it for firsts, or I really think just second graders. But to me, I think that starting in the third grade, which is where we're required, that's where it's necessary because the state delivers the testing through the laptops in the third grade. For me, I, in my legal lens, I look at things, are they necessary? And then, are they advisable? You know what I mean? And the technology is not necessary up till the third grade. And so, I think it's important to acknowledge that. What we're doing in the K through two, and potentially, you guys have the equipment, so you could do it in TK, you know, and this board would not be able to say anything about the matter. But I think, I think that it is short-term, quick feedback, and I do believe in the analog education for the TK through second crowd. Now, does that mean that I don't want the teachers to have their equipment, their laptops, the way they're delivering the information? No. But if you're asking me my opinion, I would love to take the iPads out of the classrooms. Thank you.
Ms. Marcus?
Well, thank you. It's been interesting to sit and listen to my colleagues. First of all, I want to thank all the teachers that came here tonight and all of the experts on the use of technology in the room. And I have to tell you, as I sat there, there was so much information that you were giving us about the use of it and how you use it and so on, that I had trouble actually sometimes ingesting it all and using it. And I am, I'm going to say something that I hope you don't mind, I'm a visionary person. Don't tell me, show me. And I think I could have used a little bit more of "show me" on this to show exactly the examples that would be used. And I will tell you right now, I know that in the next year, I'm going to be sitting in a different chair, and I'm going to be coming to you and asking you, please, give me some examples. Would you be willing to share with me at a meeting how you're using technology? Because I think that will say a thousand words, and I really feel that that was what was missing tonight for me. Because as you know, I taught many years, I never had technology. I used the old pen and pencil paper way, and I did okay during those days, I'm pretty sure. But I know that things have changed, and I'm accepting them. Kids are going out to get jobs today, and as you pointed out so very clearly, the three things that they need to have, and one of them was technology literacy. And of course, that's something that I do not have completely, but thanks to a few teachers in this district who I'm looking at, will know that I appreciate whatever they taught me and kept me up to date. The first thing I want to say is that I want to thank you very much, Mr. Margot, for making a specific point about the parents complaining and the use of technology in the school and the social media. You were right on, and I'm 100% behind you. So, thank you for making that comment. We were talking about, as the years go by, how children and the students get to use technology differently. And starting with the elementary, moving on to the middle, the lower elementary, to the lower middle school, the three through five, and the middle school, and then to the high school, I was amazed at the way that you are using technology to enhance the education. But like I said, I would like to see the examples of it because I think it will make it a better picture for us to digest. I have a little bit of a problem, and I'm just going to express it, I don't know, I haven't been able to see it, and that is aligning the I-ready with the CASP testing. I'm still not a believer in that approach. I haven't seen the grades go up enough to warrant, and I may be off-base, but this is in my opinion only, I have seen things that have not really improved enough with the use of I-ready in the scores for the kids. And I'm hoping that that will change this year. I know that that is something that I will be really looking at. So, from that standpoint, I am concerned about the one comment that was made, and I hope that's not the case, technology is not being used in the classroom to babysit. And I hope that that is not something that we are doing. That is a very big thing for me, and I'm hoping that it is used as a tool. I will not take it away from the teachers. I believe that they are using it as a tool, but as a good tool that helps kids learn. So, with that in mind, I just want to thank everybody again for being here tonight, for your very comprehensive coverage of your use of technology. I was very impressed by it, and I will now turn it over to my colleague.
Thank you so much for all of the great information. I loved the presentation. I loved hearing about how it not only works as something for the students, but for the administrators, for the teachers, and the word that was used was that they are extensions rather than replacements. And I think that that is the key operative word here is, nothing is going to supplant a great teacher. a great teacher, a great educator, a great culture of learning. But there are tools that can serve as extensions. I am familiar with the work of John Hape. And when Mr. Weddell was talking, my understanding is some of the harms of technology as referenced for, you know, the, the precipitous increase in anxiety, suicidal ideation, all those things, especially among girls, starting in the 2000s, but also peaking again in 2010, was mainly because of the cell phone use with social media. So if we have that, and we talk about, say, a seventh grade class watching an absolutely spellbinding 3D animation of cell anatomy, you're not going to tell me that one is harmful and the other one's harmful for the same reason, because it's a screen. No. So when we talk about some of the maladies of mental illness and emotional harm, I do agree, and I do believe, I know so, that social media and phone use, and being home in your, home alone in your room, and comparing body imaging, image as a young, as a 13, 14 year old, those all, I can see how that would, and I, I do see that, be attached to some of the psychopathology. But when we talk about, when we switch to the other side, and we're not looking at social media, and we're talking about the conversation of extensions of science, extensions of technology, extensions of creative outlet, extensions of how you present the information you learn, again, I'm going to go back to the idea of a 3D animation of cell anatomy. Not only that, let's say that seventh grader is particularly confused about how mitochondria reproduces itself with ATP, okay? So that same student, and I know this because I watch these things just for fun, because I'm a nerd, and I'm proud of it. But, so let's say that particular seventh grader wants to focus in on that one process, okay? So then they zoom in, they look at it, they under, they can go back to that particular segment in the video that is particularly obscure for them, about how mitochondria downloads this ion channel, and these things happen. And could they do that in an encyclopedia? Sure. Would they have the benefit of 3D animation and then being able to couple it with an audio track, so that if they're a student who has a hard time understanding, because, you know, visually it's very confusing, but they have it paired with an audio track, or they have dyslexia, which we're all on the hook for in about a year, to screen everyone with dyslexia? We are kidding ourselves if we say, no way, we can't have 3D animation of science, because we must just stick to static books and textbooks. Well, I can tell you that when you look at some of the, the top two schools that did have some of the, did have, I think, the highest scores for U.S. News &amp; World Report, we had the Whitney School in Cerritos, and we had STEM Academy in Riverside. There is no such thing as a ban on technology of any sort. These are some students who are very high achieving, and they continually use technology, such as in science and in the other areas you said, for these so-called extensions. So again, if we want to really focus on academic excellence, and we want to attract some of the best talent from some of the top graduate schools that train teachers, then I really do suggest that we keep a lid on social media harms, and we continue to educate, educate, educate. We continue to make sure that cell phones do not create cyberbullying, depression, body shaming, all those things that we know they do. We are already ahead of the game in terms of making some guardrails for the middle school cell phone use, and also the high school, which I still want to look at, because sometimes I'm not sure that all kids are putting their phones in a phone locker. I know it's different across classes, but that's another matter. The last thing I want to say is, I was a sixth grade teacher a long time ago in Pacific Palisades, and those were some great years. And I remember that when all the kids were doing poorly, this was sixth grade, they were doing poorly in math, and I thought, you know, the only way I'm going to understand how to improve my math instruction is to really understand which areas are, that they're not doing well, that they're not doing well in. And it just so happens that year, that we got something, it was not iReady, it was like Star Math, or Accelerated Math, or something. But the point is, it was incredible. I could see, I could just press a button, and it generated a report, how did my kids do on decimals? Okay? Like that. I could see by bar graph, I could see by circle, pi graph, I could see, oh my gosh, a quarter of the class was not able to master decimals. Okay? Now, if I just had workbooks and consumables, as we call them, and I went through each one, you know what? I could not efficiently tell you what I need to work on to make my kids get to the next level for math, because it wouldn't have been that easy for me to interpret that data. So there's tools that just in general can guide us and align us towards educational excellence, with the caveat that we are careful about the real problems of social media. And I will say in closing that those, those problems are real. They are with, with phones, and some of the things that, that kids will do with cyberbullying. And I just came across a picture of my son, my oldest son, he was at an eighth grade birthday party, and he was going like this in the picture, because everyone there had a phone except for him. And it's because I held out, because I knew, and I know. And there must be guardrails, and that is hard, because, you know, you're right, Judy, if they're at school, and they're using iPads, and they like it, and they go home, and they want to continue that, well, I mean, we can't control what happens at home, but if we're using it educationally, and we're using it for educational purposes, then that, then we're doing what we need to do. Hopefully, when they go home, there is, there are parameters and boundaries for what the parents hold to be true in their family, and that should be respected. Thank you.
You know, it's been mostly said, but, you know, I want to also, first of all, just say thank you to the teachers and staff for putting together the presentation. Certainly, as I said before, teaching is, continues to be, I think, the hardest profession that's out there. The challenges that we have as teachers to ensure that we're preparing kids for this rapidly changing, evolving technical world, changes and increases every year. So I want to acknowledge that, and, and by seeing the presentation today, it was very insightful. And also just the fact that, you know, that not only the challenges, but this, this change now, and we've got people with different opinions about technology. And I think it's important that, as superintendent, that, that we take that into consideration. We have a large group of parents that do have some concerns, some fall right in the middle, some of our parents do have a concern about what is the effects of technology on brain development for our youngest children. And I think we, we do have to take that under consideration. And I have read some of the research too, and it's, it's scary. But I think the most important thing is, is really that this has now opened up a dialogue here. And I think that, you know, we, as we heard about what those, some of those effects are, and now we've heard about the, what we're doing with, with the technology in the classroom and the assessments, and while that's great, I think we've hit kind of both ends of the spectrum, I, I do think it's really important to continue this conversation as we have our board meetings. Let us share with you a little bit about what's happening. We have the advantage of coming into classrooms and being in your classrooms. I have personally seen what you're doing with technology, and it's amazing. And I would like to continue this conversation. One thing that we've always said as a board and cabinet team is that these meetings should be more about education and more about instruction. And I see no better conversation moving forward than the one that we're having now. But I also want to ensure that we, we're acknowledging some of the concerns that our parents have. You know, we're all here for the well-being of children as well, so I don't want to overlook some of those concerns. But I do want to take the opportunity throughout the year to talk about what we are doing. And I think that it, it only takes a few people that create this random goofy assignment out there that has TikTok involved, or that, that ruins it for like the real things that are happening in the classroom. And that goes with any profession, and those outliers always exist, they will. But I do think it really does bring the importance back to improving student learning, whether it's on the teacher's side, and the planning and preparation side, but also then on the student's side. And I think we have the great opportunity, we have the audience right here, all year, twice a month, to have the conversation continue, and to show you the real life things that are happening in our classrooms that are preparing our kids. And as we've said many times, sitting here, that our kids have the opportunity to pick any college or university that they want to attend in the world, and be able to attend. So I think it's a good stage moving forward to share those opportunities with you about what's happening, and how we're using it, not only with our students, because I'd like to see more students come, but also that diagnostic approach. Because I think that that's pretty incredible, what's happening behind the scenes, that you're doing to prepare the work that you're doing. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have our superintendent report.
Thank you very much. It'll take just one second to switch over. As I typically do in the beginning of my reports, just, just quickly reaching out, Yom Kippur, it is a recognition in our community, and, and want to recognize this month and this day, and also to recognize our Indigenous Peoples' Day that has already occurred for this particular month. We have our PSAT Day, which is tomorrow at the high school. And as you can see, that we have a lot of activity that's happening, from PSAT testing for our ninth graders, to a college and career sessions for our sophomores, the actual PSAT testing for our juniors, and then a college workday for our seniors. Well deserved. Also, at the farmer's market coming up is a harvest festival in the city of Beverly Hills. Last week, we had our great shakeout, as every school district in the state prepares for the very likelihood that there could be an earthquake that happens, and the safety that we have. Thank you to Mr. Mead, and to all of our school principals for helping to organize the great shakeout. It's an opportunity for us to go through that drill, and show our connection to the city, and what we would do in case of an emergency. But also, it gives us an opportunity to use some of the, the technology that we have with our Titan Alert system, and our administration to put us through the paces for what we would do, how we would communicate with one another in case of an earthquake, or really any emergency in front of us. Want to thank the high school team, their counseling team for, they have submitted an application through AXA, and it's a, it's a RAMP application that is provided, the, the data's provided by our counselors. We've talked before at this table about the increasing work that we're doing with our counselors, especially at the high school level. And so it's time now to take some of the work that's been done, and to get some recognition for this work. And so we're excited, that information has been sent, and we are hoping to be recognized for our excellence in counseling. We did put out some information to you, just want to share with you at the board level, how excited we are about what's happening at the AP level at the high school. We have improved with the number of students that are taking at least one AP class at the high school, from 58% to 62%. And that is in large part to the board's support for, to continue our AP classes, and to slowly increase the number of offerings that we have for our students. And also, for the high school is the platinum status for our college credit and college optimization, which is, again, recognition for the number of students that are taking AP classes that are getting a three or higher. And that continues to increase. I want to thank Dr. Seaman, and also to Dr. Horvath, for being a very large part of our professional development day that we had last week. And this was a great participation from our teachers. Our teachers really came in prepared to learn, and put in a full day with four different sessions on professional development, and everything from observations in teaching and learning, but also to workplace violence. And so it was a full realm of teaching opportunities for our staff. And really want to thank our staff for jumping in and being very much a part of the program. I often say, the more you put in, the more you get out. And every session that I went into, our staff was fully engaged, and, and being, not only participating, but really contributing. And that really sets, sets the tone, and it was just another great day. And I know that Dr. Seaman's Education Services, entire team, Dr. Sherman, just everybody, and thank you so much. That is a lot of work to put on that day. So congratulations. Our students had an opportunity to display some of their work at the Beverly Hills Art Show. As you know, this is an international art show that happens twice a year in Beverly Hills. And so we have a small area where we're able to put up student art. I know that there were some concerns about the location, which we will work on, but it is a great opportunity. We have our foot in the door to an international venue, and we would like to continue to push that, and, and get a better location, and have some more participation here. But we're very thankful for what we do have with the city, and the relationship that we have, that we're able to at least be at the table and to show this work internationally. So it's just some very quick updates. The, the picture on the left, I, I had made a comment about the Madrigals, and about, I really liked the jackets that they were wearing. So they, the Madrigals have, they challenged me and said, well, we'd like to give you one, but you have to sing first. And so this is a picture of us singing the national anthem. I, don't give me a challenge, because I'll take it. And I was there, and we did it. And so now I'm still waiting for my jacket, Mr. Smith. So if you're watching, and I know that you are, still waiting for my jacket in a size medium, please. On the right-hand side, thank you to our PTSA, who have developed master classes for our staff, and for our, our community and parents to take. And this is certainly a very popular one with Chef Lees, and you can't sign up fast enough. This is, it brings back memories of, of our parents having to sign up for some of the community programs, and they are just at the refresh, 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 just to try to get in. This is one of those classes. But it's a great way to bring in the community into our curriculum, and about some of the offerings that we have here in BHUSD. At the middle school, this is just on the left-hand side, some of our French students, and they are putting in some, some time in our French classes, and this is like the 1A. So this is like talking about our French-speaking countries. And it's an opportunity for our students to not only hear the language, but to also begin speaking the language. And then our avid students are on the right-hand side, and they are participating in collaborative skills training. And you can see there's a real visual way, as most of the avid curriculum is, where it's very hands-on, and there is an expectation that students are collaborating, working, speaking, and problem-solving together. At El Rodeo, they had their national prevention, it's National Fire Prevention Week with the fire department, and also it was National Walk School Day, where some of our board members were able to join our schools. And lastly, just at Horseman, what a great opportunity. I see that Principal Ellerby's here, and just want to thank her and her staff for, what a great event every year. But this is just, as you can see in this picture, this collage, just the, the number of cultures that are represented, everything from food to dance to art to music. It is literally like an amusement park. It is just, there's so much to do and so much to see, and it was highly attended, and people were very engaged. And it was just a really, really nice opportunity. This is, talk about community, this is the true meaning of community. So what a great event that was on Sunday afternoon. Just quickly, just as, as we enter the, one of the final phases of reconfiguration, is the moving of the district office. And so one thing that we will be communicating to shortly with the community is, is what this move is going to look like, how this impacts people in the community and our staff, rightfully so. We had been planning to do this for quite some time. We were really focusing on the successful opening of El Rodeo, and so, and we've done that. And so it's now time for that last and final phase. And we'll be moving into the Hawthorne spaces over the next few months. We should be finished by December, but we have a very thoughtful and productive move so that it's not so disruptive. But it is a big change for our district office, and so we are working with all of our teams there. We have a meeting this week with our district office. I want to thank the cabinet for their collaboration, for meeting and working with your staff in your departments on how to make this to be a successful move without this interrupting the daily operations. We know at the end of the day that this is going to place us in a much better position to serve our staff and our community in some new facilities. Granted, it is moving a district office into a school. It's going to stay a school. Hawthorne is a school. It will always be a school. And so we're moving into some of the existing space. We're doing this in a very budget-friendly way so that we're not knocking walls down and reconfiguring and changing buildings. This is that we are adapting the way that we do business in a pre-existing space. But we're pretty excited about it. There's an awesome charm. There's an awesome just aura and feeling about being at Hawthorne, and we do have our preschool there, so we will be next to kids. And we're really excited about having that opportunity. It's a better connection with our families that are starting in BHUSD at the earliest age, and we're all going to be there together. And I think what's really important is to know kind of what that future is going to be like. As you know, we are in some ongoing conversations with the city about developing an early childhood center at the Hawthorne space. And there's enough room for us there to do all three things: the preschool program, a new early childhood program, what that's going to look like. That's going to be happening this year as we develop that together, as well as our district offices being in the same space. So we're pretty excited about that. So that will be happening over the next several weeks to several couple of months, and we will update you on our progress. We'll be reaching out to our neighbors as well to let them know of what some of the changes are going to be and what Hawthorne is going to look like, that campus, in the next couple of months. Finally, just some pictures here for you to just take a look at all the great things that are happening in our school district with kids, from athletics to activities to what's happening in our classrooms. And we're just really excited to be able to present to you tonight and then also continue these conversations as we continue out through the school year. And thank you very much.
All right. Comments, questions? Mr. Margot? Ms. Manishery?
No, but thank you for sharing all of that.
You bet.
Ms. Marcus?
No, thank you very much for the report. I just was one little example of something that I thought that said, "Don't tell me, show me," and that's the collaborative use of the Avid program with the kids working together for that. And that's what I was talking about before. "Don't tell me, show me."
Got it.
No further questions for me. Thank you for an excellent report. Exciting times to look at moving the administration. I know it's no easy project, but you guys did El Rodeo with flying colors, so...
Yep.
Okay, we're going to move on to item 12A.
I'd like to make a motion for the approval of Resolution 2024-25-006.
Okay.
I will second the motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We move to planning and facilities. I'll make a motion for the approval of Amendment Number One to contract for materials, testing, and inspection with RMA Group at Horseman Elementary School.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion for the acceptance and filing of a notice of completion and release of retention for Beverly Hills High School B3B4 Fiber Cable Pull Project with Taft Electric.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And now we move to an update on Horseman Elementary School front gate.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Bree. Thank you for allowing me to speak here. We have a couple of presentations tonight, so I'd like to start off with an update and kind of revisit our... A plan that we came up with at the beginning of this year and presented to the board in March. At that time, we discussed this... The Horseman pick-up and drop-off area. And this is the area from the street view, as you can see. And what I was asked to do today is kind of represent the plan, show you what it looked like again, and perhaps get some guidance on whether or not we'd like to proceed or answer any questions. This is the street view, and then here... Oops, I skipped a slide. And here's an aerial view. So from Charleeville, as some of you know, a lot of the parents pick up and drop off their kids right here on the sidewalk. And it kind of becomes a bottleneck of all the parents congregating on the sidewalk and not giving them a lot of space for... To pick up and drop off their kids. What we proposed to do back in March is put a secondary fence and a gate at the bottom of the circle here. If I could show you. And what this will do is allow the parents to use this space here to congregate and wait for the students as they come in and out of the campus. What we proposed at the time was a about $40,000 to possibly $60,000 project if we were to proceed. And if I can go back, and also one last thing is, the fence will match this fencing that's currently here now. So it'll be similar to what you see here, but it'll be back at the circle area. And as I mentioned, about $40,000 to $60,000, and we would use developer fees for that if we were to proceed. Welcome. Any comments or questions?
I'm glad that you addressed this. I remember about a year ago or so, I had some legitimate complaints about the security, the safety of it, and the bottleneck there, and I'm really glad we're addressing it. Mr. Margot?
It was my recollection that we gave direction to do this, so I'm wondering why it's coming back to us.
At the time, we kind of got authorization to proceed, and then we were told to put it on hold while we do the other summer projects at Horseman.
Okay. You weren't told to put it on hold by the board, though.
Okay.
Right? I'm just saying.
Well, did we give direction to put this on hold?
Yes. I believe, yes. That's what was...
Yes, there was some dialogue about waiting and looking at this. There were a couple of different options that we were looking at, right?
I remember that. I remember we narrowed down on this one. That's why I'm... And if we did put it on hold, I questioned what was going on through our mind at the time if it not have been put on hold. I would like to look to Principal Ellerby and ask her... Because you're relatively new to this. Do you still feel the necessity of a project? Okay, absolutely. She said she's not mic'd, so I'll echo those concerns. Yes?
Yeah.
I recall that we got a little busy by we... I mean you. And we definitely wanted to get the shade structures and other student-oriented areas up in time. And I want to thank you and your team for making that happen. I have been in that Horseman area at different times, and I feel like the kids, families, staff, everybody's like spilling into the street, and it concerns me. And so I am more than happy to proceed with this, and I would be curious to know... I understood that we had set the funds aside for this. Let me know about that, and what's the timing on it, please?
So we didn't officially set the funds aside, but we do have funds within our developer fees.
Yes.
And the timing on it will basically the lead time for these... The fence, and it's a prefabricated fence that we're going to purchase. So I'd have to check with the manufacturer to provide you an update on the timings.
Is it sections?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you. I mean, I want to reiterate my support, and from what I've seen, sooner is better, please. Thank you.
Well, I was one of the people that decided that I wasn't ready to go ahead with this, and I'm taking responsibility for that. Since that time, I did visit the school, and I did observe the tremendous people congregating, right on the street practically, of Charleeville, and felt that was really not so. I am not at all opposed to this. I hope that the $40,000 doesn't get to be a lot more, number one. I hope that we already have approval from this for the state so we can proceed without any delay. But the only other thing I would like to point out is you've got landscape and landscape. I hope there's some intent to have people come in while they're waiting and sit down, and I don't see anything there that would give me that feeling that this is going to be a relaxation place for kids, for parents, to have a chance to sit down and maybe chat or what have you. So that would be the only thing that I would add to that, that I don't want to prevent it from being started. Please, go ahead and do it.
Just to answer one question about the state, this does not need to go to DSA. They may have to look at the egress as far as the path of travel goes, but structurally, it does not have to be reviewed by the state and obviously fire life access. They don't need to look at that if we have accessibility. Secondly, you asked, we were talked about in cabinet about putting some seating there. And if we can, you know, maybe clear out some of the landscaped area without making it a large project and make it a hardscape project. But we talked about seating, probably umbrella seating in that area.
We also just recently dedicated a tree to a teacher that was there, Mrs. Katz, so...
It's on the right-hand side.
Yeah, well, that's in that area.
Those... That seating could be naming opportunities. BHF, if you're listening.
All right.
All right, so thank you. That's all I had on that topic.
Okay.
Now we have our second presentation. So another thing we'd like to do today is, we were asked to kind of touch on the work that's going to be happening around the new conheim and the effects of the path of travel at the high school. So as part of that, though, we decided with the help of Amin and his team, we're going to put a quick update together on the construction projects in general, and then we'll get to the path of travel.
Good evening, board members and Mr. Braggie. So thanks for having me again here tonight. Some quick updates. Again, we are on the schedule for all future projects as we discussed in the past. We are starting with the site prep and ready site work, ready for new conheim or Building C, the new swimming pool, retaining walls, and the south side of the grand lawn. The board has already approved the GMP Number One, so we are excited that we are starting a new project as of next Monday, so October 28. They are ready to mobilize through the site and start fencing. As part of that, we are going to create and develop a new walkway inside the campus to connect the upper portion of the campus with the athletic facilities. That we are going to talk about that in detail in further slides. Building C still is on a schedule. That October completion date includes demolition of the existing conheim. So the building completion portion of that is still... We are on track to complete by July or August of 2026. Grand lawn, the upper portion or the northern portion of the grand lawn, which is facing our current B3B4 project, that also is on track to be completed by next July. And obviously, and the last but not the least, the upper athletic field project, we are waiting for DSA approval and hoping to have that project also completed by next July. I am very excited. Today was a very big milestone in B3B4. The middle portion, the middle picture shows that the decking in the main auditorium was complete. Today, the floor, the concrete floor is fully poured, so now we have a full, complete room. You can, like, hopefully tomorrow, if it dries out, you can walk in and you see like that. It looks like a full, complete auditorium building. Now we are getting into finishes. That's a huge milestone for the project. That was a date that we set with Pro West about like six, seven months ago, and that I'm very proud and glad that it was a collaborative teamwork that we achieved that. The concrete pour is done. And again, everything after this is going to be a lot easier, and we are hoping that this project is going to be completed on time as we promised that it's going to be ready for the students by July 2024... 2025, sorry. The board was asking about what portion of the grand lawn will be completed as part of this. So the gray area is the area is going to be occupied by the construction and activities related to new conheim project. And obviously, on the right-hand side of the project, that's the portion that's going to be completed. So there is a new drop-off area in the front of grand lawn. That's also going to be completed as part of this portion of the work. And as you can see, a majority of the landscaping, everything is going to be done except for that left portion that's going to leave... We have to give that to the contractor for Building C, and they are going to complete that when the structure of Building C is complete. And upper athletic field, nothing has changed. Just a quick update that this is how it's going to look like when it's done. And again, we are waiting for DSA approval. The contractor is going to go through their internal procurement, and hopefully, we are going to break ground very quickly and very soon on this one as well. A quick, very quick budget update for Building C or new conheim. This is a construction value only. This number obviously is going to fluctuate as we go toward or through our GMPs. We are going to have two more GMPs that we are going to bring in front of the board. Hopefully, next one is going to be in front of you in the December board meeting, which is going to have the majority of the work. And as you can see, again, we are within the budget that was defined for the project. The estimate of the contractor is very close to us. Our first GMP was exactly within the budget that we had. Again, the number is going to go fluctuate. A little bit concerned on the earthwork and the cost of the earthwork and export and import of soil that we are working toward resolution of that. And if that hurdle is being resolved, I am very confident that this project is going to be done within the budget that is defined for it. The walkway that we talked about, so this is what it's going to look like. Sorry if the slide is a little bit small, but as you can see, there is a basically yellow fence line. That's a temporary fencing that's going to sit around the perimeter of the work for Building C, the new swimming pool, and the related two retaining walls that needs to be built as part of the project. In order to provide this to the contractor, obviously, the walkway, that existing ramp that we have that connects the upper and lower portion of the field is going to be demolished. In order to provide a clear, safe path of travel or walking for the students, we are going to build that, basically that kind of red fence line that you see. That's going to be a temporary walkway that we are going to build to connect in front of Building B2 that's going to come down all the way, and this is all inside the property. And basically, it's going to turn in front of the existing gymnasium right now and go toward the swimming pool. So this is going to be the path of travel between now, when we start the construction, and basically by July of next year. So when the students are coming back, there is a permanent walkway that goes in the back of new conheim and between the swimming pool and the conheim. That's... We are going to build that. So when the student come back, they are going to have a permanent walkway that's going to connect the upper and lower portion of the site. to connect the upper and lower portion of the site. We worked very collaboratively with the cabinet, the high school principal, back and forth and make sure that this is the best and the most productive and effective path of travel for the students. And I think at this point, everybody is happy with that and we are moving forward with that.
What happened? So, just really quick before I turn it over to Dr. Braggie, I just want to mention that it was a collaborative effort between Amin and his team, our contractor, general contractor Swinerton, cabinet and as he mentioned, the principal, Mark Mead, Tim Ellis and him working with the JPA. That collaborative effort allowed us to create this path of travel that we feel is best. And also, with the help of Amin and his team, we were able to move the path of travel back inside of our property rather than allowing or having the kids walk out onto the sidewalk. So, because of that, now we're keeping all the students on the campus and not having them walk down the public walkway for any reason.
Can I just ask a quick question? Is, I'm looking at the last slide before we leave this. That, that number 11, that 10-foot wide student path that's leading down, is that, is that a straight path or is that going to be a switchback?
It's going to be a straight path, but it's not going to be ADA, but we are going to have provide like if the kid needs an accommodation, there is going to be a golf cart to help that. So, it's, they are going to grade.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Okay. All right, thanks.
I just want to say thank you so much. Oh, sorry, there's more.
Part of the presentation.
So, yeah, if you can turn it in just a second, but I also want to, you know, I don't want to underestimate, you know, the work that's been done because, you know, to have us all out there, that, that changed several times, that path. And so, thank you for listening to us and all of us being out there for hours and actually walking it before we had our students do that, like that helped us all kind of look at it from a different way. So, I also want to extend my thank you to you for really actively listening, but then also problem solving as well because it is really literally like working on a postage stamp, what we're doing with the lawn and with the pathway. It's like a Rubik's Cube, trying to get this the best way that we can. So, thank you very much for that. I'm just going to talk to you a little bit about, it was connected to what I had talked about earlier with the, the district office. This is kind of all coming at a good time. The best news that is possible, if you can just switch that slide, is we're getting ready now for this other work as we're talking about finishing B3, B4 and that is coming offline very soon. Without any hesitation, we're talking about the new Conheim and so, it's very exciting. And so, with the work that's happening in the South Field area, there's going to be some changes here that we're getting ready for, that we're starting to communicate to the city with and to our community. But with this work, there's going to be impact right away to that parking lot, so the swim gym parking lot, there's going to be impact and that is going to be closing and that will happen on the 28th of October. So, just a week away that that is going to close. And, and so, what's happening is we have staff that work directly in the Conheim that park there. And so, there are 65 spots that are in that swim gym area. Not all of them are used every day, but we're going to be with the move that's happening from the district office, we're able to utilize some of the spaces that we have there as people begin to move out in their departments. Student services is moving out first and they will have five or six spots that will become available for some of our coaches and some of our staff that report every day to the Conheim. So, the people are not going to see this big change or be inconvenienced because we're going to slowly start this progression where we're starting to provide those spots so that we have places for our staff to park. Clearly, right now, there are 34 spots in that district office space, which we actually have a lot of our staff that's parking in the swim gym. So, through this move, we will be slowly being able to just reorganize and have places for people. And then we're also, I think, in a very positive way, starting to look at how we can utilize that parking lot than the district office parking lot. And so, we are in discussions right now about how do we manage that after, after school and how can we best utilize this, this lot, even though it's 34 spaces, it's, it's still 34 spaces. And so, we're looking at, and we're, from a budget conscious mind, we were looking at what that would cost to have a security guard there who, as we have now at the swim gym parking lot, that can let people in that are authorized to be in and park, but that's a very expensive option. We looked at having the option of giving the garage clickers, gate clickers to people, but some of our people that work with the city maybe teach one swimming class a week and to give them a clicker that we'll probably never see again and then all of a sudden, you know, the entire city is going to have clickers to get in. So, we're trying to be creative about that. We do have our Salto lock agreements in place and so, we're actually looking at something a little bit more innovative so that we could use that system that could immediately give people access that need access, but we can also turn that access off immediately as well through the Salto system. So, we are actually looking at that being in place with an electric gate through Salto instead of using a human person at that gate. We do not want to just close it off and have that unused. We, we do want, and we do feel it's our responsibility to manage that in some way so that people can benefit from parking there that need to park there. So, that is our next challenge to be able to do that and we've got some time over the next couple of months as the move happens to start looking at and looking into a Salto option that would immediately give people that access if they, if they need it. So, but exciting things happening with, it's all kind of coming together and as one area is starting construction and we're having to move and displace some people, we're doing that in a way that is the least impact to our, our students and also our staff and the community and our relationship with the JPA as well. So, wanted to share that with you as well. And I think that's, I think that's it.
Actually, were you finished? Okay. I, first I wanted to ask if maybe Mr. Stewart will be sending out a correspondence to the high school community just to let them know?
He will be.
And then, next, I wanted to thank you all because I feel like this is the light at the end of the tunnel.
It is.
That's how it feels. And there's something about building C going up in two years that is mind-blowing, so thank you for that. And also, hopefully, building C is going to be something new that's added for the students. So, while it might be a thorn in our side, it's not really taking anything away from them as the courts come online in the summer and so on. So, thank you tremendously. As I look at the last pic, the second to last picture, it brings me back to El Rodeo and sorry to add a little to-do list to your pile, but Mrs. Kaber had approached us in the late spring about, you know, customizing some of those areas for the TK Kinder crowd and I just wanted to welcome that discussion at your convenience. Thank you.
Well, first of all, I'm excited about how fast we are moving ahead and that we will soon see some real progress again. It's been sort of like not so much on, but there's been a lot going on, but we can't see it, but now we're going to see a lot going on. I wanted to ask you one thing. In your figuring out the path for the kids to get from the lower gym area to the classes up above, how many minutes does it take them to get from one section to another with the amount of passing time that they're given and has that been given any consideration?
I don't think it's going to change at all because it's very parallel to the path that they are taking right now. So, it's just, we are shifting.
It's the same.
Yeah.
It's basically about the same.
Maybe even shorter because this is like a straight ramp, so, yeah.
Okay. And I, I think that was my main question and I'm very happy to see this next report. So, thank you.
There is an existing like switchback ramp right now that students right now are using. This is going to be parallel exactly to that and it's going to be a straight line with a little bit more slope.
Oh, okay, good. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Great. I echo the sentiments of my colleagues here. It has been, I'm not going to lie, it's been really rough, you know, for the kids to not have access and, you know, there's, there's kids whose whole high school career was and will be at the end in, under construction. So, I'm really happy to hear that it's been very efficient and I do trust that the, the end dates will be firm and I'm very happy about that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see. So, we're now on to 14A, discussion and appointment of district finance committee member. Ms. Manishari, did you want to talk about this or anyone quickly wanted to start?
Sure. I mean, so, as I shared in the last board meeting and Dr. Braggie shared as well, we had one resignation in the finance committee, which is Mr. Goldstein. So, was he your appointment?
No, mine.
No, he was yours.
Well, actually, it was both mine and Mel Spitz and I was the one that recommended it to him.
Yep. I'm giving you something now that I was just able to get so that you can see past appointments by board members.
Great. One reason why it's really important from what I can tell is it's been a challenge for the finance committee to establish a quorum. And so, by adding another person, we will be enabling them to meet consistently. And so, they also shared with us and with Dr. Hasty at, I think it was last, last week's meeting, hey, can you please, you know, help us with this? So, it doesn't matter for me if we do it now or in a couple of weeks, you know, if you, whatever it is, I just wanted to highlight that our finance committee has made this request of us.
Yes, and I'll also add too though, that this is, you know, the finance committee has also said that they don't feel like they need to meet as often and so, that they felt like even quarterly meetings would be better and because things are really on track and they, they feel like they're updated and provided with really good information. So, I think that that's also something that puts us in good stead to, we'll find somebody next to be on the committee, but it's also not going to be meeting every single month.
Correct. Do they meet virtually or just like?
No, we're in person.
In person and where is that?
District office.
I think that if anybody thinks of anybody, if you have any ideas or so on, we should share them so that, since Mel is no longer on the bar, I don't know who the next person would be, but I think it would be interesting to share with everybody so that when the appointment is made, we've all had, even though it's not our appointment.
Well, I think I'm next to make that appointment, but obviously, you know, I want to do this in concert with the, you guys and see.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
What sort of names come forward? I mean, you know.
Can I also make a recommendation? I think that if you would, if you, if you have some people that might be interested to reach out to Dr. Hasty and myself, just because it, I think it's important that people know what the committee is about before they sign up. So, if, if you have some people that, you know, that you do know that might be interested and, you know, having them reach out to us, it's always better that somebody knows really what the committee's charge is before they get on it.
Yeah, I'll think about it too. Thank you.
Okay.
I'll be in touch with Mandy, you, Dr. Braggie with any suggestions.
Great.
Great, but I think that's, that's true. They do need to know what they're signing up for because we don't want someone to get up there and then say, ah, it's not for me. So, I think that's great. Okay, we move on to a discussion item of elementary school administrator duties, roles and responsibilities. I think you can keep this. I have, I have one, I think, yes, I do. We were talking about the different respective responsibilities. Thank you. I have this El Rodeo and also Horace Mann sheet, looking at it. Anyone want to open up this discussion?
This is just a board requested item.
I, I just had asked to have this discussion because different parents had come to me to mention, hey, I'm encountering this, who do I talk to? And I actually didn't have the answer myself and so, that's why I raised the issue to Dr. Braggie and Dr. Braggie said, actually, this is not a closed session topic, it's an open session topic. So, here, here we are. So, thank you for this. I, I wasn't even, excuse me, planning to discuss it. I just was really hoping for the information so that when parents come to us, we know how to answer them.
I'd like to just point out one thing if I could and that is between the, the two elementary schools, there's no mention, I don't see it, of the counselor at El Rodeo and yet I know that Mr. Waddle is the...
We shouldn't be referring anybody.
Huh?
We, I don't think, sorry.
I don't think we should be referring people directly to a counselor, that.
There is no mention of...
No mention of a, an assistant principal on this sheet as there is on the other.
The counselor is technically not administrative, but I do, I do have one question. So, just from an administrative perspective, for example, if a, if a parent has a concern that is one of these things, are you wanting them to email all administration, all three administrators or two in the case of Hoff El Rodeo at this moment? I'm just curious to know. I'll give you an example. The reason why this came up for me personally is I spoke to a couple of parents, addressed me outside of El Rodeo and they had a question about something going on in the yard. And so, I always refer to the trustee chart and I said, well, I said, I personally would start with my teacher because your teacher wants to know what's happening with your student from the minute they're on campus to the minute they leave and they have strong connections with the yard staff too, so let them know because that kind of thing usually makes its way back in the classroom too. That was the advice that I gave at that point. So, then that's why I came back to Dr. Braggie because I was not sure if I was giving the correct advice or not. And so, this is just good for reference. Thank you.
Yeah, are, are you suggesting that there's, just on the website, there's just some more detailed information about who to contact? Is that really the basis of?
I just was curious to know if somebody is having an issue, is, does everything start with the teacher or if it's one of the things that, for example, here we have campus supervision is Mr. Painter's purview. Are you wanting for a parent to email all three administrators or just Mr. Painter?
I mean, typically, if you reach out to any administrator, I mean, I don't, I don't know that people are going to remember exactly who, who does what. I don't know how many people are actually going to look on a website, but...
I just get so many questions, I want to be able to say, he's your guy.
I, I know that if you reach out to the school, whether it's to the administration or to the front office, that they will direct that person to the person that's responsible. You know, it's a lot of information to put on a website if, if, you know, we don't see that people are actually clicking and looking on the website for that detailed information. Most people will pick up the phone or they'll send a quick email and they'll make sure it gets to the right person unless there's any other information from our administration that's here today.
But this is good for us to have in general so that we know how are things divvied up and, you know, how, it's good to know. So, thank you for taking the time.
It's a very organized kind of, you know, look at what everybody is doing and where, where that's all happening.
And with that.
All right. Thank you. With that, any communication from board members, meeting reports or other?
Yes, just quickly, I attended the Human Relations Commission meeting last week, gave my report on behalf of the district. Couple of things of note, Kindness Week is coming up in February, the commission is working on that and they recently awarded this year's Embrace Civility Award to Jeanne Marks, longtime, very philanthropic generous member of our community, most notable of the Fireman Scholarship Fund that she's responsible for, but also other wonderful things. I will leave that for the commission to cover in their reports, but that was also done this week. And also, for those of you who weren't here 43 years ago, when the Yankees last played the Dodgers in the World Series, 43 years sometimes goes by in a blink because I remember the 1981 World Series when the, at the time, the Dodgers beat my beloved Yankees just having relocated from New York. But, thank you, Kevin. And I just, people, whether you're a baseball fan or not, just recognize this is a moment in time that's happening again and you...
is a moment in time that's happening again, and you never know when it happens after that. So it's just a fascinating thing. It is the most, what's the right word here? It's, it's the biggest rivalry in the World Series. They've played each other 11 times. No other team has played each other in the World Series as much as the Yankees and the Dodgers. So it's an exciting moment, and I'm sure the networks are loving the ad revenue. Anyway, thank you. Go whoever you're rooting for. I'm not even running for office when I said that. I mean, when I had the Yankees, Mets, and the Dodgers in the running, I had, I was having severe, like, identity crisis. I was not healthy in my household. So I'm glad that at least the Dodgers put the Mets out of their misery, so I can make a decision.
Well, I'm a Bruin and a Trojan, so I feel that way all the time. I only have to share that earlier today, I attended, on behalf of the board, the Recreation and Parks Commission hearing or meeting, which was, I, I really love being with them. They do so much for our kids all summer long, all winter long, all afternoon long. And I think that it's important, and I'm, I'm there only for 15, 20 minutes, because our closed session starts. But I'm glad to go, and they're always so grateful to hear about what's happening and the impact of their programming on our shared students. And that's about it.
I would like to mention that I attended the CBOC meeting this past week. They talked about the budget. They had a report of the budget from the company that handled the financing. They got a chance to meet Mr. Hasty, and that was his first meeting to the Finance Committee. They're just beginning to ramp up for their performance audit, and they were explained the process and so on before they do it. And of course, they're really concerned about getting as much information as they can beforehand to help them do the audit. And it's all a matter of how it can be, the process proceeds. But they were explained the process, and, and I think they are very, very happy with the way things are going, that the money is being spent according to the way it's being spent, that there's a great deal of transparency in the money and the spending. They were really thrilled with that. So.
Go get them, Mrs. Marcus.
I got them. I got them. So that, and I would like to say a word about the, I, I attended the, the display at the City Art Show. It was amazing. But what I wanted to see was the art show that our children did. That's the only reason I basically went. And I had a hard time finding it. When I finally did find it, it was off in a very remote corner of Rodeo and Park Lane. And I thought to myself, this is the way we're showing our students? I thought, this is not right. And I mentioned it to Dr. Bregge, and I think he did allude to that today in his report. And I really was very upset about that. And so I will approach, as quietly as I can, as a member of the City Council about it, because I never keep things to my-
Location, location.
Yeah. So I, and then this coming Monday, unfortunately, it's before the fact, we have our Health and Safety Committee, and I, we've been trying to get it to happen, but Ally Norman is going to make a presentation about the Norman Aid at that meeting, and she's also going to do a moment of mindfulness for the committee. So I'm, they're very excited to have her come. And I'll be there with her. And that's my report for the time being. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Stern, defer back to me. Just, since we will not be meeting again before this pretty momentous occasion on November 5th, I want to remind everybody to make sure you exercise your right to vote, because people died for it. Yes, that's a guilt trip, and there's no excuses. And if your kids are old enough, they should be registered, and they should be voting, too. Really important. I'm actually bringing my daughter's ballot up to her in Oregon for Family Weekend up there, so she can actually vote in person. And then I'm going to carry it back down here and put it in the ballot box. So.
Are you going to put that on the envelope that you deliver it?
No, because she's going to fill it out. So she's going to sign it.
So who brings it in?
No, I'll deliver it. But that doesn't matter. Just drop in the box. But anyway, very important. Thank you, Dr. Stern, for deferring to me.
Thank you, everyone. I was, over the last week, I attended the board, School Board Member Candidate Forum. And I see that we have one of our candidates here. Hello. And I just was going to say that I found it to be a very pleasant experience. And I want to thank Segali and Russell and Della, as well as the administration and staff that were, and the BHEF kids that were able to host it. I, I think that it's an amazing thing to be able to serve and also to vote. And I could have cared less in my 20s and 30s, and I'm just really glad that now I care about these things. And I really do, and it's really a privilege. So it was a nice experience, and we'll see how things shake out. Thank you. With that, I think we are adjourned.